Welcome, everybody. The time is now 7:01 and the executive session has been concluded. The participants in the executive session were...
Suzanne Leclerc.
David Butterey.
Aaron Smith.
Neil Levy.
Carol Harvey.
Ken Matthews.
Phil Mella.
Noel Sawyer.
John Schaefer.
Al Carlson.
Thank you. If any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matter is not included in a motion to go into the executive session, occurred during that executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns now. Here in none, the next agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance if you all join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic or which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you all very much. As you can see, we have an extended agenda this evening, so I'll ask everybody to be succinct, to the point, and we'll try to handle a lot of business in the right way. We will move on to number four ceremonies, presentations, and appointments, and I think Karen Casey Svetich is here. Good evening, Karen.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for giving me just a minute to... Oops. This... Sorry about that. To just do a brief reminder that the Teller County Care's volunteer service awards nominations are coming up, and we will be communicating that via email to all of our constituents throughout Teller County. This is a project that North Teller Building Generation and the Gold Belt Communities Building Generation work on collectively, and so one of the things that has happened over the last couple of years that I've been involved with this award is we don't get many applications, particularly from North Teller. And so I really want to encourage you to think about the great volunteers that we have in our community. We certainly have a huge number who volunteer in many, many capacities, and each of you has a packet of nomination packet at your place on the dais. So I just wanted to point out the awards. A couple of years ago, we switched from awarding plaques to these real meaningful and useful pieces of pottery. And so we're able to work with a local artisan. This is an example of the 2013, and this is an example from last year, 2014, and they took a picture of the bottom because it scribes Teller County Cares and then the year. And so it gives our awardees something meaningful to either display in their house, they can use it as well. And just the deadline for nominations is January 8, 2016. It just takes a few minutes. It asks just brief information on one page about the nominee, and then up to a 400-word description of why you want to nominate them. And so 400 words is less than a page. And the award ceremony is Tuesday, February 9, and it's at the Heritage Center in Cripple Creek. And so I know some of you have participated before. So that's all I have. Spread the word.
Great, thank you very much, Karen. Any questions, Council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 4B, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. As Council may recall, we had Elizabeth Nykamp, who was our CAC, our Committee Advisory Member for the PPACG design. And Ms. Nykamp has recruited Mr. Howard Ray Burgess for this position. He is in the audience tonight. A copy of his application is attached, and he has served in this capacity before for Green Mountain Falls, where he used to reside, and now he resides in right outside Woodland Park in Teller County. Mr. Burgess is here this evening and available for any questions that you may have from him, and if Council chooses to appoint him, I am ready to swear him in.
Council, any questions for Mr. Burgess? Any objections to Mr. Burgess?
I'd just like to say thank you for doing this. Neil and I have gone to the PPACG meetings, and there was a lot of people there and a lot of information to take in if you haven't. And so double the work here is what PPACG, so enjoy.
I've been in for a year for the town down there, and it's a very challengeable job because of some of the issues that you have to sit, you have to know what's going on. So when Elizabeth confronted me with this and said, "I like working for..." But she knew I wanted to volunteer, recently retired federal government...
Excuse me. Do me a favor, Mr. Burgess, would you just come to the podium? Thank you, sir.
I'm recently a retired federal government employee, so I really love my working in my community. I've always worked in my community wherever I've been in some capacity. So I had volunteered for Green Mountain Falls even before we even built a house there, but we kind of give up on that, decided to move up here. And so this was my way of giving back to the community. I'm in the Masonic Lodge here, so it was a wonderful way to get involved in a different capacity besides helping with the Boy Scouts and things like that.
Well, thanks. Thanks for moving up here, first and foremost, and thanks for your willingness to participate. We really appreciate it. Any other questions for Mr. Burgess?
I move to approve the appointment of Mr. Burgess to the Pike's Peak Area Council of Government Citizens Advisory Group.
Second. Great, Suzanne.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Mayor, I might point out this evening, it's unusual that we have the outgoing person at this meeting as well. Ms. Nykamp is here and her whole family, or a lot of her family, to support her nomination of the new appointee. So I think we owe her a round of applause and a thanks.
Mr. Burgess, if you'll join me at the podium. Have you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Miss Levy.
I, Ray Burgess.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Colorado.
And of the State of Colorado.
The Charter and Ordinances.
The Charter of Inordinances.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
Of the City of Woodland Park.
And that I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of PPACG.
The duties of PPACG.
Citizens Advisory Council.
Citizens Advisory Council.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll have you sign your oath. And I'll give you this one to keep. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
And once again, Elizabeth, thank you very much for your service. How long have you been on the CAC?
My term would have expired in May, so I believe it's a full term, so two years and a half.
Great, we really appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number five. I don't have any additions, deletions, or corrections. And so we'll move on to consent calendar, and Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening on the consent calendar, we have two items. We have the minutes of the October 15 regular council meeting, and we have approval of Aquatic Center pre-construction contract with Adamson and Peterson in the amount of
Questions, Council?
Yes, what does a pre-construction service contract entail if we have yet to purchase a piece of property to build the pool on?
The pre-construction services from a general contractor take it from the schematic design through to design development, so it flushes out the design and gives us the ability to have a firm, detailed estimate. It was the result of that product that convinced me to bring to the Council the relocation of this, so it's that next step that we need to take to understand the full cost of building this facility.
Anybody else?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Second. Suzanne.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move forward. No one finished business tonight, and we'll move on to 8A, and Laura Peregrino, welcome, Laura. We're going to consider ordinance number 1257 on initial posting.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This is ordinance number 1257 for Park State Bank and Trust, who is the property owner. It's an ordinance that will vacate a 10-foot utility and drainage unit between lots nine and 10 of Paradise of Colorado, filing number two, with an address of 271 and 281 Thunderridge Drive. It is in the residential zone, and we are asking for initial reading tonight and public hearing to be set for November 19, 2015.
Thank you. Council, do we have any questions? If not, we'll call for motion to consider ordinance number 1257.
Move to consider 1257 on initial posting for a public hearing set for November 19.
Second. Suzanne.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, we'll move forward to 8B, and Sally's already here. Welcome, Sally.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on initial posting that deals with the Teller County Waste Facility. Nearly a year ago, their conditional use and special use permit was approved with a special condition that the improvements needed to be completed within one year. That deadline would be November 20. Mr. Baker is planning on finishing, and we believe that we may be able to pull this off the agenda in two weeks, but just as a precaution, because of the weather, he still has concrete paving left to do on the site. It's 95% completed with the overall improvements. It's just this small portion of paving that still needs to be done, and this ordinance would allow for the council and staff to extend the deadline and be able to complete that without having to cause him to cease and desist operations. So with that, we would like to request that you approve it on initial posting, set the public hearing for November 19, and we'll hopefully have it completed by the 20th.
Questions, Ken?
What's the extension time period?
Well, we have made the time period to June 1, 2016, and that would also be secured with an appropriate security. We really do not think it will take that long, absolutely, but that was the reasonable date to set it to.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, sounds good. If more other questions, I need a call for motion.
Move to approve ordinance number 1260 on initial posting and set the public hearing for the 19th of November.
Second. Okay, Suzanne.
Matthews.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey.
Yep.
Levy.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Suzanne. We'll move on to public hearings and item number 9A, and I think before we start, I have to recuse myself as before on these A and B items, and then later probably for item 10A. Well, we'll look forward to seeing you soon. Okay, Aaron Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you, our items, 9A and B, ordinances 1244 and 1251 for formal approval. These are also going to... My short presentation is also going to include reference to item 10A, Resolution 796, and I would be asking that you take that out of order and at the closing of presentation and at the close of council, questions and deliberation, let council then approve in three separate motions, ordinance 1244, ordinance 1251, and resolution 796. With that introduction, I would say that my presentation tonight is to supplement the presentation of the last council meeting. At that council meeting, I walked council in detail through the changes to ordinance 1244 and ordinance 1251 and resolution 796. The changes that you walked through, the council wanted more time, and so we continued the matters for tonight. Council requested more time to consider the walked-through changes, and so that's what the last three weeks have provided. I would point out that the red line ordinances and the red line resolution contain all of those... Actually, the resolution is not red line because there were no additional changes. So all of the red lines reflect what you walked, what council has walked through on October 15, with the addition of one additional change to ordinance 1251 administrative deliberations. And if I could ask council to turn to ordinance 1251, and then turn to page 17, ordinance I would point out the additional change that came as a result of discussions with Peak Internet on certain compliance matters that were addressed in exchange for, or as we had recommended to council, in exchange for staff recommendation to take out the jail time and replace it with just a increased penalty fine, which again is in the red line documents that you have. I would walk you through 52, section 5211 on page 17, and what that provides for is it does provide for the service line for a telecommunications provider to bury that less than the 30 inches, which is contained in the engineering specifications for other lines of that sort. And the trade-off there is that should that service line be hit, even if properly located, then the telecommunications provider is responsible for repairing all damage to it. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The public hearing has been completed, and the public comment has been completed. So at this point, really what is left is for council to approve ordinance 1244, 1251, and resolution 796. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Any other questions? We've discussed this, but we've had a couple that haven't been here, and so we'll open it up for discussion. Carol, would you like to start?
Yeah, Aaron, there were two places that talked about using the CPI for rate increases. Did we correct both of those?
We did.
Okay.
Thank you. Those were... That was in 1244, and it was fixed there, and also it was fixed in resolution 796. Thank you.
Question about 5211. How was the three-month period determined for having the cable lie on the surface?
I'm going to ask the city engineer to respond to that. Thank you.
Well, we had some discussions in Beaconet about how the typical process happens, and also our observations from other providers of similar services. And typically, that's done by a contractor, somebody outside the organization that comes and buries those all in one operation. And we need to give them some time to do that, and weather-dependent, and it was agreed upon that three months is a reasonable time to get that work done, because they often do contract and do that all in big chunks rather than one at a time.
All right.
So it's based on input from Peak and observation from other operations.
Okay. Another question. Cable to be buried at a depth not less than six inches. Wasn't that a larger number earlier? Like 30 inches?
30 inches is our standard before these service lines that go from the pedestals to the individual residence, business, point of service. Typically, they're at six inches.
Just a little bit more. Six inches through somebody's front yard is significantly less intrusive than a 30-inch burial, and a 30-inch burial is just not needed. So six inches allows it to get below the surface of, say, planting a tree or something, but it's not so deep that it tears up the whole yard.
No frost or freezing concerns?
This is telecommunications service lines.
All right. Not water or sewer?
Not water sewer. Seven feet on the water.
Yes.
Six on the sewer.
Not eight?
Six.
Aaron, thank you. I wasn't a part of the discussion, but the section three in the main opening ordinance 1251, where it's set enforcement, I'm glad to see that both parties came to a logical solution that you can't... That jail time is not an option. So thank you.
And again, thank you for that. Again, we received no other comments from any other providers besides Peak, and so those were... That seemed like a reasonable approach for the city to take, so thank you.
Thank you for working that out. Everything else looks great. I wish I was here last two weeks ago, but you missed out on the excitement.
No, you don't. I... Just another comment. I did follow my colleague, Mr. Mella's advice at the last meeting and suffered... No, I won't say suffered.
Watched the video.
And watched the video for all of its glorious 75 minutes, and I thought our attorney did an excellent job.
Well, thank you.
Explaining all of that.
Well, I'd like to comment, too, that these three documents were never intended to be specific to one entity, one organization. But having said that, Peak Internet's attorney, I think, represented her customer or her client very well, and I think that she helped us craft a more succinct and a more focused ordinance for this particular issue. And the issue is very important, but I want to reiterate, this is not about Peak Internet. This is about protecting the public right of way for all of our citizens and the safety of the community.
Thank you. Mr. Mella, do you have anything to add? No, sir. Mr. Carlson. If not, then on the advice of Ms. Smith, we will ask for a motion for 9A, 9B, and 10A individually. Move to approve ordinance 1244. Second. Thank you. Suzanne?
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Levy.
Yes.
Matthews. Oops, excuse me. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
I move to approve ordinance number 1251.
Second. Suzanne.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Levy.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then out of order, but we'll move to number 10A. Motion to approve resolution number 796. Suzanne.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Carlson.
Yes.
Harvey, yes. Levy.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thanks. And before everyone leaves, so a few people are going to leave, and I realize this just wasn't for Peak Internet, but Jason, I want to thank you and Ms. Scott, certainly along with Aaron Smith and David Butterey and Bill Osbuck. I know this was not an easy process at some times, but again, we've got a great community with everybody wanting the best for the community and working together, so we look forward to our relationship with you like we prefaced this whole thing. Seems like forever ago, but at least six or seven weeks. We love having you in our community. What you provide for us is something that we just can't do without, so I'm glad we have a great relationship, and as I've said to you before, anybody else, if you have any issues, please let us know. That's what we're here for. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, and council and SAG. Well, glad to be... You've got it all worked out.
Thank you. And I failed to mention Kip, too. I know Kip Wiley was a big part of that process also, so thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item number 9C, and Brian Fleury is already here with us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Ordinance 1252 approving the purchase of Lot 2, the Vectra Bank subdivision of City Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado. On the screen, this references section one of the ordinance under Real Estate Contract provision, City Woodland Park ordinance 1252, series 2015. There are five provisions generally metrics in the real estate contract that the city attorney and I looked through that I think are pertinent to the conversation this evening. Contract to buy and sell real estate, standard Colorado commercial contract. It is signed by Vectra Bank. Vacant land, Lot 2, Vectra Bank subdivision, Woodland Park. I'll show you some site, exact location. Purchase price is $100,000. There is an Altapolicy commitment provided to city attorney, which has been accepted. And then the closing date is set on or before December 31, 2015. This drawing, just to highlight, this area here, Lot 1, is where the Woodland Hardware is. Highway 24 runs right here. Park, street, west. Center is built into the hardware store location of Woodland Station. South of Drive is built east to Park. The area in question, this will be Lot 2, this is Berkshire Park, this is what we call the AmeriGas site, if you're familiar with that. Vectra Bank, so hopefully everybody's got their geography in place here. This is the lot in question. Lot 2 of the Vectra Bank subdivision, this is Lot 1, which includes the bank, and then the Vectra parcel, Lot 2, is the parcel that is subject to the ordinance and the provisions of the sale. This is an area, again, this is the old, if you remember, the old AmeriGas tank site, which now has been removed. This is the Vectra Bank parcel 2. The easement in question, this is important. Council will recall ordinance 1250, which previously had been approved, which allows, and I'll just point it out, the teal here color, about an 81 foot north... color, about an eighty-one foot north to southeastment, which provides construction area for a road that would allow for the build out of Saddle Club Drive, as you recall, from Park to West. This is West here. Again, this is Vectra Bank, this is the older Catholic Church property. One of the caveats that's important to note is, the easement is not perfected unless there is a sale of the property. Okay? Again, the easement is not perfected without the sale of the property, and that's a function of the easement that is in the easement language that was approved by, by council. The staff recommendation after a public hearing is conducted says staff recommends approval of ordinance 1252 as presented with the provisions subnoted above. What questions can I answer from councils this evening?
Bob?
Yeah. I understood that the future road extension of Saddle Club Drive would go all the way over to West Street, but there's nothing mentioned about that south end of the Vectra property. What's the status of that?
This right here, Councilman Carlson, you're talking about this right here?
No, I'm just talking about the west of the easement.
The easement itself?
Yeah.
There is, as a function of the contract to purchase, it does not include the easement, although it's generally accepted in our negotiation that the $100,000 included the fee simple purchase of lot two, but it would also include an extension of the easement, the eighty-one foot north to south. It is not expressly written in the contract, but that was part of the negotiation process.
So whoever develops this in the future would be able to build the road all the way to West Street?
That's accurate.
Okay.
Just real quick, two issues. Property easement. You proved the easement language, which is the south end of the Vectra property.
Okay.
That eighty-one feet. The property purchase is the green with where Brian has the cursor right now.
That's the pro.
By the purchase and the perfecting of the easement, it guarantees us then access and the extension of Saddle Club Drive to West.
Okay. Could you tell me a bit about that, that green lot right there? The part that we really knew, because the road is just the south end of it, what's the intention about the northern?
Well, this, again, that's an accurate statement. The actual right-of-way will consume about one-half of lot two, where I have the cursor right now. The remaining northern portion is envisioned, assuming the city owns it, could subdivide it, split it in half, and that could be offered for sale. We've already had an expressed interest from the AmeriGas ownership, although that is not a guarantee. It's up to the city, quite frankly. And there's some conversation about a master development agreement, perhaps, for the remainder of Woodland Station, which might include that northern portion of, of lot two. But that would be separately, that could be separately conveyed and sold.
Okay, so there may be a near-term possibility of getting that part of the lot sold, then, and that money then reimbursed to the city, if they own it.
That's accurate.
Okay. Okay.
Well, because you brought it up, what would AmeriGas, what would their design on that piece of property be? Another tank field?
No, it's actually, AmeriGas no longer owns it. It's owned by, and you may know the owners of Augen Weatherford.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's a, it's an ownership group. Their interest is, is access to Saddle Club Drive. Their interest would be in some potential development. They would probably enjoin this northern portion with the, we just call it the AmeriGas site. It's owned by a new ownership group.
Okay, thank you.
It's been alluded to, but it doesn't say here the purchase price. You include the purchase price of $100,000 in the, in the question, in the resolution?
It's ordinance, I'm sorry. Your motion, please.
It is not in the ordinance, that's accurate.
Oh, the $100,000 not mentioned in the?
It's not in the ordinance. It's not in front of you. It doesn't say. That's, that's the price that we all know, but it's not included. I just.
Why isn't it in it?
Well.
Because the ordinance references a specific contract which contains that amount, but I think it's fine to include that in the motion.
Real quick, how did you determine the price, Mr. Fleer?
It was, I can tell you, a long, arduous process that with Vectra, the city manager, DDA members, it really came down to what Vectra perceived as the value on the books that they hold, and believe me, the price was higher. We negotiated to $100,000. It also included, like I said, although not contractually, the easement that we got on lot one that we just referenced in, in the southern portion. Some of it related to market value. We had a recent appraisal done. We were able to empirically look at the value and come up with a, a value that we thought we could support and the council could support moving forward.
So it was effectively comparables done, research, and then the negotiation?
Yes.
And it went downward from the original price?
If you recall, we had an appraisal done by CB Richard Ellis on the Woodland Station project as it related to the original aquatic center. We had some basis, we had some comps. We used that number. Ultimately, Vectra Bank agreed with that.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, and there's nothing mentioned in there of the source of funding the city would use on paying the $100,000. What is the intention to do?
That's a question for the general fund.
Yeah. Okay. Previously, when we discussed this, I suggested that perhaps the general fund might be a pretty bit tight until we know what the cost of the aquatic center is. And we should know that in early December, hopefully, unless in the schedule anyway. So until we know whether or not we need these general funds for that, I'm suggesting we may want to give consideration to the 410 account, and then maybe make the decision in December as to whether, what's affordable and that sort of thing.
We're not allowed to have one fund loan to another fund. Enterprise can do it across the enterprise border. The general fund can support 410, but not the converse. But what, what I am wanting to do is to look at the ordinance that established the funding for 410. It generally states for street improvements and drainage improvements. It does allow for some flexibility for street improvements if the council approves it. So after I do a little bit of research and speak to the city attorney, I may come back to you and say, well, the bottom sixty feet is what we would anticipate using for a roadway. We might be able to fund that portion with 410, and then the residual with the general fund. But I, I'm.
That seems like a reasonable alternative, too, because.
I beg your pardon?
Yeah, that sounds like a reasonable alternative, because that, that, the bond, the past was basically for roads, and this is for a road, at least half of the property.
It's not as clear as you might think, which is why I'll consult with the city attorney, and then we'll bring that back to council for your discussion.
Okay.
David, was the $1,000 or $100,000 expenditure covered in our expenses for 2016?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Okay, actually, in 2015, and if it doesn't happen in 2015, it would carry forward to 2016.
Okay.
Motion.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ordinance 1252, approving the purchase of lot two, Vectra Bank subdivision, City of Woodland Park, Teller County, Colorado.
Second. Mayor, is there a public comment, public hearing?
I'm sorry, there is.
Thank you, Brian. Anybody like to speak on this subject? If not, we'll move forward. Thanks, Brian. Do you have anything else?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne, we have a motion in a second.
Thank you. Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Brian, thanks very much.
Brian, thanks for your hard work on this. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on to 9D, I need to read the phone. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communication during these public hearings. That said, we'll move on to 9D, and welcome back, Laura Feladino.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, members of council. My name is Laura Feladino, and I am the city planner. We are here today in front of the city council for the public hearing on November 5th, 2015, for the BSI yeast lab. It is a CUP application to change the use to allow for section 1809, 090 V1, which is a wholesale trade and distribution establishment use for a yeast-producing microbiology lab. BSI is the Boiling Science Institute, and the applicant is here tonight, and will be making a presentation following mine. Some chronology on this application. There was a community meeting that was held at 7:00 PM on September 16, 2015, a couple of months ago. And at that meeting, about twenty members of the community were present and listened to the presentation by the applicant, and really had no concerns, had some questions of the applicant. But it was a good turnout, and it was a good opportunity for the community to learn about this project. We had the first reading by city council on October 15, 2015, and prior to that, we had the planning commission review and consideration of this case on October 8th of 2015. And again, members of the community came out of that Sonanglen neighborhood, and they really had no concerns with this particular application. Tonight, we're here for the city council public hearing and the decision on this application. So this application is occurring here in the southeast corner of the city. On this map, you can see Highway 24 going through the city and Highway 67 going north. And here in the southeast corner, east of Highway 24, is the site. This is a close-up showing an air photo of the Paradox and Tweeds building. That is the former uses on the building for the site that we are considering today. It is lot seven of the Village subdivision, and as you can see, it's pretty much fully developed, and the building exists, landscaping's been done, parking is fully compliant. This gives you a general idea of the site and some of the surrounding uses. You can see there are two vacant lots immediately to the north that are existing, and then immediately to the east are four vacant lots, which will be the subject of the next item on the agenda. Beyond those vacant lots are residential lots that have been fully improved, subdivided, and are in ownership and are in residence today as we speak. To the south are some vacant lots that are commercially zoned. And then, of course, this is Highway 24 going north and south, east-west, however you want to orient yourself. This is Walmart immediately to the northwest, and a couple of detention ponds, and the City of Woodland Park lift station immediately to the south right here. So that gives you a general layout of the site. This shows you some of the surrounding zoning. The site for the BSI Boiling Yeast Lab is right here. Everything in color is within the jurisdiction of the City of Woodland Park and is so zoned. The yellow is suburban residential, those residential lots that we saw in the air photo. The pink is the neighborhood commercial zone, which is this site and some of the immediately adjacent sites. Again, these two vacant lots here are also zoned neighborhood commercial. And this is the Walmart site, which is zone PUD. Everything in white is Teller County jurisdiction, and of course, right here is the Pike National Forest, and further east of the Pike National Forest is El Paso County. So that is some of the surrounding zoning. Here are some very, some photos of the site. This is looking directly to the west, to the east facade, looking west towards the east facade of the existing Tweeds-Paradox building. It could be considered the main entrance to the building. There are other entrances on the north and south side, but this is what the building looks like. It has been there for some time. This is climbing up into some of those vacant lots, north of this building, looking down, showing you some of the topography surrounding the site, and looking down onto the Paradox-Tweed building. This is the north facade. There is an entrance for deliveries on the side, as there is on the south side as well. This is from the Village Terrace right-of-way, looking south and west towards the Tweed building, and then down the U-Pass. And this is looking at the north entrance, north facade of the building, and shows you some of the landscaping that exists on the site. Staff did a full referral on this application. We did send it out to the various departments and jurisdictions in the area. We sent it out to the utilities department, the public works department, the police department, the economic development, and the building departments within the city. We also sent it out to the northeast Teller County Fire Protection District for their consideration, to IRE, to Black Hills, to Baja, and CDOT, CenturyLink. All received referrals, and all the comments that were received are included in the staff packet that you were sent, and truly, there were no major concerns with respect to this application from any of the external agencies. We did a public notification of tonight's hearing, as we did for the planning commission. We also did notifications to adjacent property owners, approximately 125 property owners, more than 150-foot radius that we typically hit. And we also did an onsite poster that has been up on the property for some months now. As I mentioned before, the zone on this property is a neighborhood commercial zone district. What I wanted to display with this particular slide, which is difficult to read because there's a lot of words on it, but really, the neighborhood commercial zone district is intended to be used as a commercial service, general, retail, personal, office establishments, those types of uses in this particular building is not unheard of, not uncommon, and certainly not out of character for what one would expect for development in the site. So we looked at the neighborhood commercial zone district limitations and specifications as specified in the municipal code. Some of the permitted uses, for instance, in the neighborhood commercial zone district, you could have things like a health, a sports club, a vet clinic, a auto parts sales, a bank, a contractor's office, those types of outright permitted uses that don't even have to go through any kind of a commercial or condition to use permit. The applicant here tonight is for a conditional use for wholesale trade and distribution. That is a conditional use that is subject to review by city council, and city council is the authorizing, the authorizing body for a conditional use permit. We also reviewed this application and the proposed use with the neighborhood commercial zone district limitations, including things like maximum height, the yard, the frontage, the parking, the fencing, and the shrubbery, all of those types of things that would normally be a conditional use application subject of interest. Again, this building is almost virtually fully developed, and this applicant moving into this building is not proposing to change the exterior substantially. Parking is more than adequate. Landscaping is already complete and fully grown, and they are not proposing to make any substantial changes to the exterior. Finally, staff did a full review and analysis of the conditional use permit standards. There are 11 standards. Staff does find that there is a need for this type of use. Mostly, there is a need to retain these types of businesses in the City of Woodland Park within our jurisdiction. They are moving from their current site, which is the Gold Hill South Commercial District, to this building, and staff is happy that they found a building to suit their needs, and that this is the building they chose. There is no impact to the public health and welfare from this proposed use, and no impact to property values that staff can discern. Staff believes it harmonizes with the adjacent land uses and with the adjacent properties and neighborhoods, that it complies with the city plans and city regulations in place at this time, that there is no significant impact due to traffic, drainage, that the water will be a connection to the city water system that currently exists, that sewer is on septic at this time, and septic will continue until such time as the applicant connects to a proposed sewer system, which will be part of discussion of the next application. And waste will be via solid waste disposal through a truck, traffic, waste disposal. Staff does not find any hazards to the site and to the proposed use, from the proposed use, and that the architectural design is fine on this site, and that there are no changes to it. Staff does recommend approval of ordinance 1253 for a conditional use permit for this use, and there are three conditions, which are pretty general in nature. Prior to certificate of occupancy, staff does request a code study with the building permits submitted for the change in use, and that we would have confirmation of a water service line upgrade and payment of any additional fees for that water service line with, with, prior to the certificate of occupancy, and also that we have a copy of the septic permit from the Teller County Environmental Health Department for use by BCI of the septic system for their proposed waste. When they do connect with the, when the connection to the city sewer line is made, they will have to come in and purchase sewer taps, and they will have to do a full report and analysis based on the waste that they're going to be putting into that sewer tap, and that is one of the conditions. And finally, that the last condition was conformance with the application and all rep. representations made in that application and in public hearings. That concludes my report, Mayor Levy. The applicant is here and does have a brief report, and maybe in the interest of time, it might be worthwhile to hold all questions to the very end after the public hearing.
That's a great idea. Let's bring the applicant forward. Gentlemen, welcome. If you will do me a favor and state your name and address for the record.
I'm David Bryant, 570 Pembroke Drive, Woodland Park.
I'm Brian Pearson, 1107 Spruce Ridge Lane, also in Woodland Park. Oh, should I go ahead?
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah. David and I are both partners at Brewing Science Institute. We are, we've applied for a conditional use permit for this, this property at the former Tweeds building. We want to introduce ourselves and tell you a little bit about what we do. We are frequently misunderstood. People don't understand what type of business we are. So we just want to explain that to you and tell you what we plan on doing in the building.
And apologies for everybody who's seen this presentation twice before. We'll try to move through it a little bit quicker.
In the interest of time?
Right.
Okay. BSI was established in 96. We moved to Teller County in 2002, and we've been in Woodland Park since 2011. We're one of the three primary yeast providers in the, in the United States for the craft brewing industry. So we make yeast or grow yeast for microbreweries. We currently have about 20 employees, mostly science-degreed employees with a BS degree or above. In the new building, we expect to grow and reach a maximum of about 30 employees, and all those would be, again, degreed or, or science-related fields. What do we do? We collect and isolated brewing strains from famous breweries around the world that we use to, as seed cultures, to grow up and, and sell to our brewery customers around the United States and in other parts of the world. The strains are aseptically grown on a food-grade barley malt extract. And, excuse me, we grow up this, this yeast in, in containers, and then we'll concentrate it and ship it out overnight to our, our customers. And we'll explain a little bit of that here coming up. You see a couple of photos there. On the right are some flasks with growing yeast in them. That's, that's where we start our process.
It's pure culture strain.
Right. There, after the strains are grown up and they're concentrated, we send them out either FedEx or UPS. They always go out overnight to their final destination in, in a cryo box. The shipments are usually picked up only Monday through Thursday, since we want to get them there the next day. We want them to arrive no later than, than Friday. And we use typically UPS trucks and FedEx trucks, like you would see for, for the pickups and deliveries. The product, on the leftmost picture, you see a small plastic bladder container that's a sample of what, what the yeast looks like. It's kind of a, looks like a, a thin paste that's, and that's what's used for fermenting the beer by our, our customers. How will we use the building? We want to maintain the exterior of the building. It's a beautiful building. We want to keep it the way it is, so we don't want to change any of the exterior finishes aside from maybe tinting out the windows and leave the landscape the same.
To keep the, the lighting to a minimum in the neighborhood and also protect our privacy of our operations, proprietary process.
Right. We're not open to our, our customers. We have proprietary processes, and we don't want them to, to take that process and learn to do it themselves. So we don't allow the customers to come to the building, so there won't be traffic from, from our customers. The only traffic will be from our employees and then the occasional pickups and deliveries. The interior, we're going to go through the City of Woodland Park change of use process, and we're going to leave most of the existing building open. We have a few photos of the inside here. The Paradox area down, that's the lower floor, will be mostly for receiving and warehouse and also pre-production. That's where we mix up the, the recipe for our yeast. And they'll be sterilized there and then moved upstairs to a cleaner area, or a clean room that we use for, for the actual growing. So that's the area that was formerly occupied by Tweeds. It's been vacant for several years now. It'll largely be left open for our clean room. The eastern portion will be the clean room with HEPA-filtered air that's very, very clean or sterile-filtered air. And it's very similar to the location that we have now, which is Gold Hill South, where Ben Franklin used to be located. We've been there for three years, and very few people even know that we're there. We kind of fly under the radar. The west portion of the, the building will be used for a large cold storage area. That's what we use to, to kind of make the yeast dormant, to put it to sleep so we can make it stable enough for, for shipping and, for the transit. So it'll be just a large refrigerator there. Once the yeast is settled at the bottom, as you see in the, the right photograph, it'll be packaged into these containers, put in the cryo box, and shipped out from the, the loading area on the west end. There, you see a photo here, it'll be shipped out and picked up by UPS over the, for FedEx. At full capacity, like we said before, we'll have up to 30 employees across seven shifts during the week. The majority will be there Monday through Friday, 8 to 5:00 PM.
And the majority of our employees are full-time employees.
The traffic analysis shows that we will reduce the, or from, from the initial traffic analysis, when the building went in, what was that, 10 years ago? We will reduce the traffic by about 82%. We'll have about 18% of the traffic that was originally projected for this building. We'll occasionally, a couple of times a month, receive a few tractor-trailers, supplies, mostly the malt syrup that we use to feed our yeast, and that'll come in the lower Paradox door. Standard pickup, like I said, is the neighborhood-sized UPS and FedEx trucks. The build-out will be a regular change of use application, with the core work being done by Paige Construction and Chuck Severance Architects, both Woodland Park businesses. A full code, code study will be accompanying the build-out plan. We will review the, the tap line and adjust as necessary for our needed fixture count. The septic and sewer plan has been vetted through the city and Teller County, and it has been evaluated by Alpine Engineering and Absolute Septic. And we have a, a plan developed so that should we need the septic system, it will suit our needs. And then we plan on extending the sewer main under the highway to tap into the Woodland Park pump station on the Walmart property. The timeline, the, the sale will complete on this coming Monday, provided we get all the, the conditional use approval. And we'll start build-out shortly thereafter. We'll go through the, the development and planning, hopefully start mid to late November and, and begin in through January. The build-out work is estimated to end through, we'll hopefully finish up around May, and we hope to occupy in May or, or June of 2016. So in summary, BSI is a longstanding member of Teller County and Woodland Park. We employ 20 to 30-degreed employees. Our operations closely resemble a large bakery. A lot of people tend to try to pigeonhole us into a brewery because we work with breweries, but we're a lot different from a brewery. We're closer to a bakery as far as, as our operation. We won't alter the exterior of the building. We love it the way it is. We're going to reduce the, the, well, the traffic will be much reduced from what the, the facility was designed way down. We feel BSI stabilized the neighborhood, offering full occupancy of the, the building that has been vacant for a while. Minimal traffic, no exterior changes, lots of good employees, full-time employees, well-paid, well, good benefits, and we provide property tax to Woodland Park. Do we have any questions? Yes, Mr. President?
Just to clarify, you may have covered this in a different way, but the, the septic or the sewage issue, I want to be clear, the existing system that's there is suitable for your use now, is that correct?
It is suitable, yes.
You said it was being vetted, so that's, that's been taken care of, but you may go under the highway to the
Yes.
future. But right now, it's okay as is, and your county has approved that, is that correct?
Approved, I don't know. There is an engineering plan.
You said Absolute Septic and some other people had looked at it?
Yeah, Alpine Engineering.
An Alpine, okay.
To expand the, the septic system if we needed it.
If we need it.
If you need it. We hoped to tie it to the sewer line.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
And there is no exhaust from the, that production that would be noxious or smelly?
Not generally. The only smells, the, the only thing that you might smell is from the cooking. We sterilize our malt syrup. It would smell a little bit like molasses for, just for comparison. If we needed to exhaust, then we could. We don't generally have to.
You wouldn't smell it outside the building. You would only smell it inside the building.
They act like a bakery, but they don't smell like a bakery.
On the, the traffic plan, you mentioned that you'd have one to two deliveries a month from tractor-trailers. Will your business own any of its own delivery trucks, or the only, the only vehicles sent would be from the employees?
That's correct. Yeah.
John?
Are your processes and product protected by patents?
No, no.
No?
No. Can't really patent the organisms or process. We just try to keep it, keep it secret, just so our, our, our customers don't figure out how to do it on their own.
All right.
I just want to say thank you for staying in Woodland Park.
Absolutely.
We're happy to stay in Woodland Park. We see this, and it seems like a great business, and you're growing, and you're bringing more employees, and, and you took a building that's been sitting there vacant for a while, so thank you. And I had no idea that you were in Gold Hill. No idea. I thought that store was vacant, except for the one issue when City Market smelled for about a week. So, do you guys remember that?
I don't know.
And everybody blamed this beer place next door, and like, there's a beer place next door?
We've been in operation for two years with no smells.
Right. Yeah, it was taken care of, but Yeah, and, yeah, the smell was not from us. Their, some of their managers were actually telling people that it was us without, without knowing, and, and put out a couple of theories, and once we debunked one theory, they'd come up with another theory. But we don't share any, anything but a wall.
Right.
Top that, that we had tapped into an HVAC system and were dumping exhaust into their building that absolutely was not.
It, it didn't matter, but I, I really appreciate, and I'm sure everyone here does, that you're staying in Woodland Park, you're bringing great employees up here, and it sounds like a really cool business. I, I didn't even know something like that existed.
Sure.
So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else to counsel?
Public hearing.
We are in public hearing now. Do we have any comment from the audience? Okay, if not, David Bryant, thanks very much again. Just reiterate what we all are thinking right now. Thanks, thanks for being with us. Hopefully, the process has been easy for you, and anything that we can do to assist you in the future, please let us know.
Appreciate it. It's been a great learning experience.
Thank you, Lauren Sally.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we have no more comment, no more questions. We'll move on and ask for a motion to approve Ordinance Number 1253.
All right. Motion to approve Ordinance 1253 for CUP to change to a wholesale trade and distribution establishment to allow a yeast-producing microbiology lab to be located in the north neighborhood, community zone, existing building. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Excuse me, you need to correct it with conditions?
With conditions.
With conditions. Which conditions did we have?
The last three.
Oh, I didn't see those. I might have to take my motion back and let someone else do it.
The three conditions were agreed to by the applicant, correct?
Yes.
So it's a very normal procedure. There's typically a few conditions associated with it, and Laura, you can put those back up? Yeah, if you, if you don't mind.
Yeah, and they are on Page 7 of the staff report, as is the entire recommendation. So do you want me to just read them or just put them back up?
Please just put them back up.
Can we just say with conditions?
Yes. Once he sees them.
Once they see them, I'll go.
Okay.
So these are a summary of the conditions. The actual language is on Page 7. There are three essential conditions, and one of them, the first one had three subparts. They were all related to the building permit and certificate of occupancy. The second one was related to the sewer system and the tap that will be needed when that sewer line goes under the highway. And the third one is just compliance and performance with all of the submittal items.
Okay, can I just say with conditions?
You may.
All right. Motion to approve Ordinance 1253 with conditions.
Perfect. Second? And we have a second. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, Suzanne.
Harvey?
Yes.
Weavey?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay. Laura, it looks like you have a busy night. We'll move on to Item 9E.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. Respectfully, I would ask that we open Items 9E, F, and G. We do have separate recommendations, but we can hold the discussion all together, and we can also hold the public hearing all at once.
That sounds great. Let's, let's do that. Thank you.
So, we are here before council on November 5th, 2015, to have a public hearing on the Woodland Park assisted living facility. Tonight, we are going to be discussing essentially three applications. The conditional use permit application for an assisted living facility for essentially a nursing home use. And in conjunction with that conditional use permit application is the site plan review. So we are considering that under one application. We're also here to hear about the Village Terrace right-of-way vacation, which is the public road immediately adjacent to the site. It's actually the right-of-way between the BSI lab and the, this site. And it is a public road, and the applicant is proposing to vacate it. And we are also here, here tonight to listen to the drainage and utility easement vacation within Lots 1 to 4. Lots 1 to 4 of the village is the site that we are talking about for this particular series of applications. And again, it's a conditional use application to change the use to allow for a nursing home, convalescent home, rest home, and home fully aged as specified in Section 1809090JI3, I'm sorry, of the municipal code. It is a, an assisted living facility that will be in two, two buildings, approximately 25 units in each building for a total of 50 units on the proposed site. We have been running the BSI yeast lab and the assisted living facility in concurrent applications for all of our meetings. So they presented at the same community meeting that BSI presented at on September 16th of 2015. Again, members, about 20 members of the Sonanglen community came out for that community meeting. And it was a discretionary meeting, a voluntary meeting, held by all of the applicants to provide information to the community. At that time, there were some concerns mentioned by the community with respect to things like the removal of the trees on the site, the traffic that the site would propose, some of the traffic patterns that currently exist in the area, as well as the traffic pattern after this proposed assisted living facility, if it does get approved, what that would look like. And some of those concerns are actually included in writing in the packets that were submitted to all of the council members with the staff report. Those same community members came out to the Planning Commission meeting on October 8th, where they again expressed their concerns about some of the traffic and tree retention strategy proposed by the applicant. First reading on the bylaws that we are considering tonight was held on October 15, 2015, in front of this council. And tonight, we are here for the public hearing on front of this council, and tonight we are here for the public hearing on three ordinances. Again, the site is in the same area, immediately adjacent and neighboring the BSI site, it is in the southeast corner of the city, the pink line shows the boundary of the city and you can see it is almost at the entrance to the city if you're coming up from Colorado Springs. This is the Pike National Forest right here, Teller County, El Paso County, further east of that, Teller County to the west, and Walmart in this thin strip right here. So that gives you a general idea of where we are located for this particular site. This site is in the village subdivision, it encompasses four lots, lots one, two, three, and four, platted in numerical order going north. These lots are currently vacant right now, you can see that there is substantial growth on the site, there is existing vegetation, some pretty big trees on this site, and that is one of the concerns of the community in terms of the trees that will have to come down. Again, surrounded by residential, the Sunny Glen neighborhood, commercial, the BSI yeast lab right here, Walmart, the detention ponds, and the lift station. With this particular application, there will be two buildings, and I'll show you a site plan, but the one building, the first phase will go on these upper two northern lots, the second phase, the second building, 25 units will go on these lower two lots. And the proposal by this applicant is to extend the sewer service from this proposed development, attach it to BSI, bring the line to this lift station across the highway underneath. So that is their proposal, and they will probably talk about it when they come up here. This is showing the zoning in the area, the site again encompasses those four lots, BSI is immediately to the west here, PUD for the Walmart sites, suburban residential immediately surrounding it in the Sunny Glen neighborhood, again, mostly improved lots with occupied by residents and families. This is the neighborhood commercial zone district in this area, again, these lots are vacant, and these are all vacant up in here, including the floor lots for this particular site. Further south is the community commercial, the community commercial zone down in here, and a small pocket of industrial zoning further to the south, pretty much at the boundary of the city of Woodland Park. These are some pictures of the site for the assisted living facility, this is if you were to drive immediately to the northernmost point of the Village Terrace cul-de-sac, which is currently right now a public right-of-way, and you were to look up the hill into some of the topography and some of the vegetation that you would see. Here is the nearest residence from this particular site that you can see from the surface of the Village Terrace right-of-way. This is looking from that northernmost corner of the Village Terrace right-of-way, immediately east into the site, this is where the assisted living facility would be developed. This is the site that we're talking about. This is looking at a residence immediately to the northwest, a little bit further away, closer to the northern end of the BSI building, and this is looking from the northern corner of the cul-de-sac, down the pass towards Colorado Springs, from the site. This is a site plan that was included in the packet for all council members, it shows the Glendale Drive coming here, this is the access off of Highway 24, which is immediately to the west, I'm gonna get my directions correct, and this is the Village Terrace right-of-way cul-de-sac that I was speaking of earlier. These are the two buildings that they are proposing in phases, the first phase will be this northern building, 25 units, and the second phase after completion of this northern building will be another 25 units at this southern location. This is the right-of-way proposed for vacation, and what will happen is if the vacation is approved, half of the property will go to the immediately adjoining lots, including half of it will go to the BSI lot, and half of the property will go to the assisted living facility property owners. Staff has no objections or concerns regarding the right-of-way vacation. And then, the application to vacate interior lot lines, you can see the four lot lines that are existing right now with these four lots, and there are drainage and utility easements adjacent to each of these lots and along the front of the property line, and that's what's also applied for vacation, and staff again has no concerns or objections to that proposal. This is a site plan showing some of the proposed mitigation with respect to landscaping that will occur, and it just shows that while a lot of the trees will be coming down, virtually every tree, except some of the trees that exist along the right-of-way, and one, perhaps one or at least one tree will be saved on the site, while the other trees are coming down, they are looking at an extensive landscaping plan to mitigate for the removal of the existing trees. So you can see that they are proposing to place some street trees in, and that was at the recommendation of staff through the planning commission review, and they are proposing a significant landscaping on the site to mitigate for, taking down the trees that they need to take down to develop the site. This is a draft, it's not the final layout for what the, one of the buildings, the floor plan might look like, and what it shows you is each of the rooms, essentially a bedroom with a bathroom facility and a tub and a sink. So, this one shows only 20 units, and again, it's just a draft, it's not the final design, but it does give you a typical layout of what the northern building might look like and the southern building. This is the northern building with the attached garage, the southern building does not have that attached garage. But what you can see is the parking lot would be here, there would be the major entrance right here, and the courtyard in the back, as well as the courtyard to the side here. So, it gives you kind of a layout. And this is a rendering showing some of the finishing materials that they might use, some of the roof layout that they would probably use. Again, their design was to keep it to a single-story building to harmonize with the character of the surrounding residences, and also to harmonize and be compliant with some of the existing commercial buildings like the BSI building next door. So they're using some of the stone facade, the gable roofs, the pitched roofs, they're keeping it low to mitigate their impact to any view corridors. And so this is a rendering of the entrance to the north building, showing the garage here on the far left and the main entrance right here. This is the Village Terrace right-of-way application, this is what would be vacated. The vacation is subject to a condition that we reserve this area for all utilities, drainage, water, sewer, anything that still needs to go, so we would not lose our ability to place those infrastructure-type items in this easement, it would become a reservation for those types of utilities. And this shows the corresponding utility and drainage easements interior to the lot with the vacation of unneeded easements interior. Staff did a full, complete review and analysis of this application, as we do for all applications. We did send a referral out to various agencies within the city, including the utilities department, the public works department, the police department, the economic development department, and the building department. We also sent it to external agencies, including the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection Department, IRA, Black Hills, Baja, CDOT, CenturyLink. All of those referral responses are included in the packets that were distributed to the council members. Any concerns are translated and transferred into conditions that I'll go through as part of our recommendation, and there really aren't a lot, the applicant has been very responsive to any concerns that have been raised both by staff and by the community. Public notices, again, we notified at least 125 adjacent property owners, more than we would for a 150-foot radius. We did an onsite poster that's been up there for quite some time, and we did a publication of tonight's hearing in Pike's Peak Courier. As mentioned before, this is the neighborhood commercial zone district, and again, this zone district, neighborhood commercial, is intended to be used as a commercial zone district, so an outright permitted use, for instance, without any kind of a CUP approval or any kind of approval by council, would be something like a health clinic, a residence care home, a library, a cultural center, a childcare center, those types of uses would be outright permitted and wouldn't even come before council. But the use that we're looking at today is a nursing home, excuse me, and it is a conditional use permit, and it does require consideration and review by council and a decision by council.
How does this differ from a residential care facility?
A residential care facility would be a licensed facility typically for one to five residents where there is medical need and attention. This will be a nursing home facility and there will be staff onsite. It's bigger, I think the applicant can tell you a little bit more about their proposal, but typically, you know, I would say that it's just simply bigger and it's larger and you could do a smaller facility.
I don't know why size would matter, it's really the function and the types of things that happen in it, and of course, we've got a skilled nursing facility, assisted living is just slightly different than that, but it's still for elderly folks that need care and attention for various functions like cooking or whatever.
Yeah, let me, can I get back to you on that question, because I'm gonna have to look up exactly what?
I'll stop you on that.
A residence care home is usually sited in a residential zone, first of all, and typically the owner resides in the home to care for the folks who are there, whether it's a disabled population or a senior population. So it's not necessarily a commercial operation like a assisted living or a nursing home. Okay, so, again, staff did a full review, this is a conditional use permit for a nursing home, that was the closest use we could find for this type of facility, and that's where it was slotted, and that's why they're going through a conditional use permit application. And we looked at the neighborhood commercial zone district limitations, including things like height, the yard requirements, the frontage requirements, the parking requirements, fencing and shrubbery requirements, signs, sidewalks, and landscaping, and staff does find that the proposal, that it does comply with all of these limitations as specified in the neighborhood commercial zone district. Further, we looked at all of the 11 CUP standards, the conditional use permit standards, staff does find that there is a need for this type of use in Woodland Park, this is the first assisted living facility of this size, this type, in the city of Woodland Park. That there is no impact to public health and welfare, that there is no impact to property values, that it does harmonize with the community as proposed and as designed, that it harmonizes with the adjacent land uses, that it complies with the city plans and city regulations, that there is no significant impact to traffic, and that traffic can be sustained by the existing network, that there is no impact to drainage, that the water will be connected to the city water, that sewer, the proposal is to connect to the city sewer system and to the lift station across the highway, and that would be a requirement prior to opening the assisted living facility. Waste would be transported via truck, Teller Waste or some such company, that there are no hazards with this proposed application, and the architectural design is well done and complies, in staff's opinion, with the requirements. We also did an application for a review of the site plan review standards, since this is a fully new, newly designed and developed building, many of the standards that we look at for site plan review are similar to what we saw for a conditional use permit, for instance, compliance with the city plans, compliance with the city regulations, including things like grading, erosion control, drainage, parking, tree retention, lighting layout, and the architectural design standards, were all looked at. Traffic again was looked at, the topography, the soils, the drainage, the environmental hazards and features of which there are none on this site were all looked at, and staff did not have any concerns. Again, water, sewer, wastewater and air quality, no concerns from staff, fire and safety hazards, this was reviewed by the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, and they have no concerns. And staff does find that it is compatible, so the recommendation is that, staff does find compliance with all of these standards for site plan review as well as for conditional use permit. We looked at the right-of-way vacation standards for the vacation of the Terrace Village right-of-way. What we consider when we vacate a right-of-way within the city are whether or not there are any impacts to utilities in the right-of-way, whether emergency services can still access the area and the lands, whether road construction feasibility is impaired, whether it's still feasible to connect this network without it being a public right-of-way, whether it still provides access to budding lots if the road were vacated, and whether area traffic patterns and adjacent landowners are affected negatively in any way. Staff did not have any concerns with this right-of-way vacation. Yes, Mr. Smith?
While you're on that, maybe a clarification just for me, but in looking at that map, when you're vacating that lot line, it appeared we're talking about four lots, there's two left up there with that vacation, how are you accessing those other two lots?
We are reserving the right-of-way for the Village Terrace as an access easement for those two lots, so they will still be able to go up that driveway.
Okay, all right.
And finally, we looked at the vacation standards for the interior drainage and easement vacations, the drainage and utilities easements. And again, we look at things in terms of whether or not there are impacts, negative impacts to utilities, to access, to future roads, to area traffic patterns, and to adjacent landowners. We did send referrals out to the utilities within the area, and we look at things like plan compliance and whether or not it complies with the neighborhood commercial zone district, and staff did find compliance with all of these limitations and requirements, and does not object to the easement vacation. So finally, there are three recommendations, three ordinances that are before council today. Staff does recommend approval based on findings contained in the staff report and findings as presented in this public hearing. We do recommend approval of ordinance 1254 for a CUP, a conditional use permit, and a site plan review as conditioned. Copies of these ordinances were attached to the staff report, I would just like to spend a moment and go through the conditions in brief, if I may. And so there are recommended approval, that the property is hereby approved for a conditional use permit for a nursing home, convalescent home, rest home, and home for the aged, and recommended approval of the site plan review subject to the following conditions: submission of a phasing plan to include phased limits of disturbance based on the construction of the north building first and the south building to follow at a later date. Condition number two, any assignments shall be reviewed and approved under a separate signed permit in compliance with the municipal code. Three, condition number three, prior to issuance of a zoning development permit for construction and site improvements. The applicant shall provide the following information for review and approval by the city: a final site plan shall be required, final utility and grading plan is required, a final landscaping plan is required, and with that landscaping plan, we also required an average of at least one evergreen tree for every 35 feet along Glendale Drive. The applicant did revise his submittal and that landscaping plan that flashed before your eyes earlier did show those trees in there. We also asked prior to, as part of the zoning development permit application for final architectural elevations, complete with all materials and colors specified, we also asked that any final approval by CDOT and compliance with their requirement be done by the applicant as we would require with the Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District, and both CDOT and Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District replied, and their conditions were very minimal, if any, and the applicant is agreeable to complying with them. Also, another condition is that the applicant must pay for various impact fees, things like tap fees, stormwater fees, transportation, capital fees with the zoning development permit. Condition number four relates to, prior to certificate of occupancy for each building, the applicant shall vacate the interior lot line between lots three and four and lots one and two, and he shall establish public utility easements pursuant to IRA comments and in accordance with the application as submitted, and the applicant is agreeable to those conditions. And finally, condition number five for the CUP and the site plan review, that approval shall be added to the site plan, this approval, and shall be the responsibility of the property owner, all trees and landscaping within the surrounding right-of-way shall be maintained by the owner. So those are the conditions for the CUP. Staff is also recommending approval of the Village Terrace right-of-way vacation as conditioned, and the only condition with that ordinance, which again is attached to the staff report, is that we reserve the area for utilities, drainage, access, all of those, all that ability still remains with the city. And finally, we recommend approval of ordinance 1256, which is the utility drainage easement vacation, and there are no conditions with that ordinance. That does conclude my report, and in the interest of time, I request that we do questions after the public hearing.
And we can do that, if you want to bring up the applicant, that'd be great.
Eric Smith, 525 Pembroke Drive, Woodland Park, Colorado. Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff. Aaron, how are you tonight? Aaron, how are you tonight?
We're excited about this project. It's something that obviously I believe our community needs. We've looked at the marketplace. It'll be built in two phases. We feel that there's a need for about 80 beds currently for assisted living in the community. We do have a skilled nursing facility that's currently under construction, and I believe that they're going to have some limited assisted living as well. So we don't like to use the term nursing home. That's kind of an older term. I know it's in our code, but you know, this is truly an assisted living facility that fits more of the current style of what we find in the marketplace. So I wear a number of different hats on the project. First of all, I'm the property owner. Second of all, I'm the civil engineer involved in the project as well. With me tonight is Justin Ballard. He's going to speak here in a moment, but Justin is the developer as well as the general contractor on the project. He's built a number of these throughout the Midwest. Laura did a great job, so we won't spend a lot of time going and rehashing things, but I was going to let Justin maybe take a minute and kind of run through the program.
Hi, I'm Justin Ballard, 10475 Elizabeth Way, Black Forest, Colorado. A little bit of our project. Very thankful to be here, even need to talk with you guys and share this. Our vision for the assisted living facility here in Woodland Park, we've developed it, my partner and I, and Ron Whiteener. We believe this project is a win-win and a win. First, let me explain this. We believe it will be a win for the population of Woodland Park and Teller County who needs assisted living. They can enjoy the stage of their lives in this beautiful home-like facility that we're going to be bringing here. They are going to be getting a different level of care. We have developed a building that has 20 units in it. There's 19 single units, and, I'm sorry, 16 single units, 13 doubles. We are different than other facilities with a home-like atmosphere for our operators. We believe that the win for Woodland Park, everyone has talked and has found that there's really no reservations as to why we're bringing it here. They like the idea. They like the concept of assisted living in the neighborhood. We also believe that the win is for our operators, that our operators are great care professionals that will be taking care of different levels of care in this facility. Their care type is for non-standard, so it's going to be, lack of a better term, they won't be taken care of like the SNF or the nursing skills facility up at the hospital. They are more able to come and go. They are not dementia or Alzheimer's patients. They have a different level of care. The other thing is, is that as the neighborhood pointed out, planners pointed out, Laura, the zone commercial, for the neighborhood commercial, there's a variety of uses, and we feel that this is one of the best fits for the neighborhood. We will be decreasing the car traffic as well as bringing a good building to the facility for the neighborhood. That's all I have.
Thanks, Justin. Just a couple of things that were brought up during our numerous meetings. Medical and biohazard waste was something that was a concern. You'll notice that one of the two buildings has a garage. These buildings are meant to work in tandem together, so the garage is where the garbage as well as the biohazard type of things are stored. It also serves as storage space for people that are moving in and out for their things so that they can be moved effectively. Another item that was brought up was meal preparation. You know, what kind of kitchen do we have? We have a very small kitchen with two stoves. There's not a major cooking, commercial kitchen in these facilities, no grease, fryers. You know, as far as the, any smells go, it wouldn't be any different than a single-family house where somebody may be barbecuing on the back deck. So we feel that it fits in the neighborhood just fine as it relates to that. No smells or any other odors. Laura's already talked about this. I guess I'd point out that 18 parking spaces are required per code for the two buildings. It's one space for every three beds, and we're providing 22 spaces. One-story building, approximately 23 feet in height, so we feel that that, once again, fits the character of the neighborhood. As far as traffic is concerned, the four lots that, as they're planted today and as were originally contemplated in the original traffic study that was completed, they showed about 800 trips being generated from these four lots. The current or proposed use has about 134 trips. So just like BSI, we're just about 17% of the trips that were originally contemplated for these, for this site. From a drainage perspective, we've worked with the Drainage Current Drainage Criteria Manual. There's an existing detention facility that's, an underground detention facility that's up on the north side of the site, and so this development will fit within that detention volume that's already, already there. View sheds, with the way the site's graded and the one-story buildings, will not be impacting any view sheds. Outdoor lighting will be full cutoff, so dark skies. Emergency vehicles, we will work with the emergency providers in the area to make sure that they're not running their sirens at midnight or 1 o'clock in the morning as they're coming to the facility if they need to come to the facility and turn their sirens off, which I believe is standard protocol in residential neighborhood-type areas anyway. Landscaping, we meet the requirements of the city landscaping code. From a property valuations perspective, Mark Weaver took a look at this and actually found that, his opinion that property values would not be impacted, that he felt that this facility would actually improve property values in the neighborhood. And that is all we have. Any questions?
Thanks, Eric. We'll get some lights on and we'll have some questions, I'm sure. Well, I'm going to start relative to need, and what's going on next to the hospital. Help me understand. My understanding is it's SNF, Alf, Rehab, Skilled, four different units, all with about 20 beds. Can you speak to that?
Correct. There's 80 beds going in there. They're looking at putting 20 into elder care. The rest of the beds are going to be for outpatient rehabilitation, long-term care, dementia, Alzheimer's units. This facility is different because it is assisted care. The level of care are greater need at that point. The hospital is taking a higher degree care level than this facility will be. These individuals are people who will need help with getting their clothes cleaned, meal preparation, remembering to take their pills, having those in a stored place. They don't have cooking units within their units. It's a condensed kitchen that is managed by the operators. In comparison, each one has their own units. If they need help getting into the shower, they get that help. They are not confined to their beds. They are not necessarily wheelchair. They're not dementia. They aren't locked down. They are free to go in and out of the building. Where in dementia, Alzheimer, the care level has them locked into security areas of the building.
I'm sorry if I missed this before, but did you say you would have full-time staff there 24/7, and they would be, they would be, they would not reside with the other member, other residents of the home? They would simply be working?
There will be staff there, and then there will be people that will reside there from time to time. There are apartments there for the owners and the operators of the facility.
What is the difference between memory care and the care for those with dementia or Alzheimer's?
Several different levels. It just depends what level you're on, but a lot of times it's locked doors, and mainly locked doors inhibiting you from hurting yourself. They have more staffing levels, and that's really the main differences, is that you actually are being confined into an area, portions of a building, and/or your care level is also taken into account where you need more people to take care of you. So the employee counts are lower in assisted living than they are in a skilled care. You would need two or more individuals to take care of a dementia patient.
What are the qualifications of those care providers? Are they, at a minimum, EMT qualified?
CNAs. Mainly CNAs, and then the operators are RNs.
Okay. Thanks.
I had a question maybe for Eric. On the site, unfamiliar with that because I live not too far from there. The detention facility along the road I'm familiar with, but it's on the north end of the property. So the south building, where is the detention for that and the, you know, the landscaping and the lot, where is that detention going to be contained?
So the detention, the way that the detention was contemplated and developed initially was that they took the flows that were coming from the upper development, containing that and releasing it at a discharge level that would accommodate a certain amount of development on this site. So if you think about the water that's going to the point on Highway 24, that design point we call a discharge point, the way that it's designed, the same amount of water will get to that location and not additional water based on, it over-detains up above so that you can release developed flow rates on the six lots. Now, there's a limit to that.
That original detention facility took care of everything above it, so what's coming out to the highways is basically the impact of the lower levels. Is that correct?
When you add the two together, you come up with the same number from historic value as you have today. So the stormwater, they put that pipe system in when they developed the seven lots. And it was to handle the drainage for those seven lots by collecting the upstream flows, detaining that because it wasn't detained before, and then releasing that at a historic rate.
Okay. Are you okay with that?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. With respect to trees, the loss and gain, can you give a feel for the net gain or loss relative to taking down trees and what you plan to plant?
I'm not sure if we counted a, you know, I don't know if I have a ratio. I couldn't give you one as far as, because I didn't count the trees that were coming down and the trees that were putting in place.
And it says one evergreen tree per 35 feet. Why 35 feet? Why not 15 or 50?
That's the city code.
Okay. And how large are those trees going to be?
I believe city code is a six-foot tall evergreen.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, vacating that existing cul-de-sac driveway, where is, I can't see on that drawing right there where the parking lots are or, you know, access to them. Do you feel a little more specific?
I don't know if I have it. Let's see. I guess, it, okay, this isn't the best graphic. We could pull up Laura's, but this is the cul-de-sac, and this is the parking lot.
Okay. That looks like a building, that's why, Eric.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like a building in the drawing.
We could pull up Laura's if you guys want to see it.
Okay. So you still are going to be using that access way, even though you're vacating part of it?
Well, we're vacating all of it. We're vacating the entire right-of-way for Village Terrace.
Okay.
So, and that's actually a benefit to the city because the city no longer has to plow it, the city no longer has to maintain it.
Oh, so what you're doing is basically making that a private street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I was wondering what vacating meant.
Anybody else from Mr. Smith?
Yeah. Question about wastewater, sewage. Are you going to have to go under Highway 24 and use lift stations?
Well, you're half-right. So yes, we are going to have to go under Highway 24. We've been working with KIP along with CDOT, and we're going to put in a gravity system. So it'll be a gravity sewer that will go from this property down to the Walmart lift station. We've submitted our construction drawings to KIP for him to review. We've also submitted them to CDOT. The portion that will go underneath the highway has to be sleeved. We will actually directionally drill the vast majority of this, and that's fairly common these days.
Has CDOT approved? What do you contemplate doing?
They've given us a thumbs up. They haven't approved because we have to go through a permitting process, but we meet all their requirements. And Mark Nuskern, who's the utility coordinator for CDOT for this area, has said that he believes that it looks fine, and we've submitted to him a set of construction drawings as well. So if the city approves it, we meet the CDOT standards, which we do, he'll, they'll provide us a permit.
Question to staff, though, and is this not the same process that BSI was proposing that they do as well?
Well, if I could address that, I was just going to say, when BSI was looking at the building early on, we had conversations. We talked about the fact that we needed to extend sewer. We're working together collectively, so it's one and the same.
Shared costs.
Yes.
Eric, thank you for bringing another employable workspace up here to Woodland Park. It's nice to have quality employees up here. You could have chose Colorado Springs, so thank you for bringing this here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Laura. You're welcome.
Anybody else before we go to public comment? Gentlemen, thank you. I think you can have a seat, and we'll take public comment. Call you if we need you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's start with Jeff Cahill. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Cahill, 187 Glendale Drive, about 200 foot due east of the proposed assisted living facility. I commend Mr. Smith for his new proposal for the use of this property. I think it's drastically needed in our community. If I retire from my present location, they can ship me 200 foot further west and bear out the rest of my life, and that might be nice because I can see the same mountain range I look at every day. What I take exception to, although they've had a good presentation, and Ms. Pellegrino as well, is the CUP standards and the SPR standards for public health and welfare and air quality. I have respiratory distress, and I came to Woodland Park to escape terrific potential fracking exhaust fumes three years ago. I checked out all the areas in the adjacent corridor of Highway 24 and came to the conclusion that the Sunnyland subdivision was the best location for me. Unfortunately, there is one neighborhood directly due west of us, which is where the Denny's restaurant is, and they have deep fat fires. Deep fat fires are affecting my lung capacity to breathe well. And so when I pass through that on our hikes, it's just a short duration that I have to tolerate that, and then we're out of that valley and we're back to my house, and we don't have that issue. I asked Mr. Ballard if he could guarantee us that they would not have deep fat fires in their kitchens, and he said, no, I can't sign that in writing. I don't want to be restricted from what I potentially can do. So to me, without having that guarantee, I have to be in opposition to what they're doing until I can be assured that there will be no distress on my respiration and I can live the rest of my life in that home 200 feet to the east and not have to be concerned about what may be occurring over in the nursing facility. Now, everyone makes the contention that this is not going to be an impact to the community, and they say the architecture is going to be compatible with our architecture. And I fully agree. The schedule's very nice. But if you take the concentration per square foot of the people that are going to be living there and existing there and using the facilities and have cooking done for them every day, it might comprise the same concentration area of four homes or eight people in our immediate vicinity. In that cul-de-sac, there'll be 60 plus with a staff. So it is not a parallel situation between what they have and what we have. So I beg to differ that there's a little bit of exaggeration and glossing over of what the potential could be. So as an individual who is threatened with that particular situation, I would like to see conditions put on their use permit or whatever the condition would be for their building application, that they in fact, as Mr. Smith alluded to for the first time tonight, not have these deep fat fires. not have these deep fat fires, but only have a conventional kitchen. And if they could use a further condition as they have at the other facility, which is being considered for the old Tweeds building, why not introduce something like a HEPA filter so they don't even have that worry after all? Not just a strainer which would catch particulates. So those are the only comments that I would have, and I'd ask you to consider those as part of the public welfare. I'm part of the public, and I'm across the street. We occupy the same airspace but growth of the zone. We are 200-foot apart neighbors, or will be. That's about the end of what I have to say. You have any questions for me? I also include a letter in your packet, so it should be there for you to peruse if you haven't already, and I addressed all these items. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
I guess I have a question, because you do mention in your letter that you had to meet certain spring standards when you improved your house.
I did.
And your point you were making is that other people should be treated similarly, that they should have to meet similar environmental standards, just as a homeowner would. Do you want to elucidate on that any?
Yes, as a home occupation, I own Quality Signs and Designs, and before I even bought my property, I went into planning and zoning and met the conditions that they required of me. They asked me, for instance, not to make excessive noise and not to have any particular fumes coming out of the facility, no exhaust fans and that sort of stuff. I said, "I don't have that problem. I spray painted for years," and that's what gave me my condition. So the long story short is, I don't have that kind of an operation anymore. It's very low-key. Most of the backgrounds that I buy for my signage application are already pre-coated for my manufacturer. So when they told me I could wait till eight o'clock at night and make noise, I said, "This is a very nice neighborhood. Eight o'clock to me is kind of, you know, very liberal. I'll voluntarily reduce my hours to 5:00 P.M." And so as a condition of home occupation, I made that commitment voluntarily, put it in writing. And when we did the new workspace application for my 864-square-foot addition, I signed the same document. In fact, I would be not making noise until 5:00 P.M. So as a good neighbor, I made that extension. I have to live with the folks that I'm adjacent to. I like them all, they're all good friends of mine now, and for the exception of one who has excessive dog barking. But the long story short is that the people that want to come across the street from us, I think, should make the same concession. That's my point of view.
I do have a question, not for you, but pointed over to Eric.
What's Mr. Cahill's?
Yeah.
Wait for his question.
Is there going to be a cafeteria or a large kitchen in this facility?
No, there's two residential blocks, but just like your own home.
Okay. Absolutely. And we appreciate Mr. Cahill's view, but we do kind of have some understanding of what is allowed and not in the neighborhood commercial. I mean, we have print shops, dry cleaners, caterers that are actually able to be permitted right now and would be more disturbance to Mr. Cahill's issue. In a residential, he had to go back in for his application for a commercial business to be ran out of his home. We're actually doing our business in the neighborhood commercial, where we would be perfectly allowed to do other things. As a successful business, we want him to be successful just like us, but we can't restrict our uses in that area. We don't know what our operators will eventually use. So-
I just, I can't compare it to Denny's because there's no large kitchen.
Correct.
If there was a large cafeteria and a large kitchen where the residents would come in and eat off a cafeteria, then it would look like a Denny's, but so I respectfully disagree with your concerns.
Well, can I make a comment, though? I mean, your present plan is to just have like two stoves. It would not be an industrial type of operation, you know, large cookers and things like that. So, but even if you were at some point to put in fat fires, is there any way you could, like Jeff mentioned, some sort of filtration system that would mitigate that particular problem?
If it were to ever become an issue, absolutely.
So you'd be willing to do mitigation measures so that his health wouldn't suffer because of what being-
We can't tell if his health is going to suffer.
Okay, you'd mitigate, so that anybody who has emphysema problems or COPD or whatever-
Would you be requiring the print shop dry cleaners to do as well?
Yeah, why not?
We couldn't. They're permitted use.
Those are permitted use.
Yeah, but couldn't we, under the administrative review, saying, "Hey, we've got clean air up here. We'd like to keep it that way. You know, please do what you can to mitigate these exhausts." And like a print shop and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering if, you know, we, I mean, where there's clean air type of thing is, we're trying to keep things clean up here.
Well, and I'm thinking, reality, I don't know what you all think, 70, 80-year-old people with a deep fryer in their kitchen, I'm not buying it. Sorry, I just don't see that, Jeff. I get your point, but I know those things are dangerous and I just personally don't see that happening a lot.
Maybe not happening a lot, Mr. Mayor, but in our city Woodland Park Plan Commission Staff Report on Roman numeral four, conditional use permit review criterion findings, it specifically has listed items, especially number nine, that the development shall address air quality protection methods. And I have heard nothing from the applicant about what they're going to do for air quality protection. It's all nebulous, it's been alluded to, it's in conversation, but there's nothing hard and fast for me to say. So I wanted to bring that up and for you to consider. You all have the ability to put that called so in there. I don't, but I can ask for it. So I thank you.
Thanks very much, Jeff.
You're back.
Okay, next I have Phyllis Cahill.
Laura has the picture, it's warm.
Good.
A couple of the new writers. Thanks.
Ms. Cahill, if you'd just state your name and address, please.
My name is Phyllis Cahill. I live at 187 Glendale Drive, directly across the street from the proposed assisted living facility. And as has been stated, I don't have any objection to the assisted living facility. My objection is to the destruction of the trees. And I wanted to show in this picture, this is taken from the middle of the cul-de-sac. I just stood in the middle and did, you know, a kind of a panorama so you could get an idea of the size of the trees and the quantity of the trees. There's some 50-foot trees or more that are there. And there are houses behind those trees that you can barely see, but when they are gone, you will definitely see them, and the residents in those houses will definitely see the new assisted living facility. And I haven't counted these, I haven't gone in the land to count them, but I have looked at a Google map and make an estimate of about 50 trees that would be destroyed. Maybe half of those are really big trees and one of those trees being saved. We did a site tour with Eric Smith and, no, not Eric Smith, but Justin Ballard and Laura.
Should we slide a show of trees?
Okay, yeah. This is a big picture of the trees. In green are, in the green circles are the trees, and you can see more clearly which ones will come down. And the one that will be saved, can I point?
I have the mouse.
This one right here is the one big tree that will be saved. And I find it very sad because I think, I would hope that Woodland Park would value trees, but it seems to be a really easy and almost casual decision to cut down all these big trees and replace them with landscaping. So a 50-foot tree is replaced by a six-foot tree, and in my mind, they're not at all the same, not at all the same thing. So I just click.
Break.
Break. Nope. Okay. This is an image that I made showing the rooftops of the proposed assisted living facility compared to the houses around it. And the Tweeds building, you can see to the south over here, this is Tweeds building, and these buildings are considerably larger and monstrous compared to the houses. And when our neighborhood was designed, the intention was to have big lots, so there's plenty of space between you and your neighbors. You have lots of land, and I'm not sure that this design is in harmony. I realize it's in a different zone, but is it in harmony with the neighborhood? I'm not quite sure about that. And here I point out again the one tree to be saved. Let me try it. In the packet that came with this, I included two alternate designs of where the buildings could be placed on the land, and both of them were rejected for various reasons. And I came up with a third one, which is this, which uses all six of the lots. Now, it would definitely cost more money because Mr. Ballard would have to buy more land and build another building, but it saves a lot of the big trees and keeps more of the integrity of the neighborhood, in my opinion. So I would ask you to consider those trees. I mean, it just seems so easy to just bulldoze them, and they're not going to grow up, you know, 50 feet or an eye. That's going to take a good 20 years, I would think, to get trees that big again. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bill?
Can we go to the previous slide that shows the aerial view of the neighborhood?
This one?
Yeah. Now, I personally am a tree hugger. I consider every tree a living being, so to speak. Not with a soul, however. But, you know, we always should plan to try to save as many trees as possible, okay? But in that development where you, you know, have these buildings of this size, you really have, you know, you're forced to have to cut a lot of them down. Now, whether that fits into the neighborhood or not, I notice across the street, those are all denuded lots. I mean, there's no trees on them, you know? So as far as fitting in with the neighborhood, it does fit in with the character of the neighborhood, okay? I know in our homeowners association, we have a covenants that require our homeowners to plant trees. And, you know, certainly we're going to have Eric and his folks there in the development plant substitute trees. I recognize that they're not going to grow very, you know, they won't be big like they are now, but at least there's some effort to replace the ones that were taken down. So I hear what you're saying there, but in this case, it's, you know, if they're going to be able to use that land at all, it, you know, it's going to have to, I mean, they have the right to do that. They are complying with the ordinances, I mean, the zoning and everything. I tend to think that in this situation, we're going to have to do some of that, okay? Sorry.
Anybody else? Counselors? John?
Well, I think Mrs. Cahill made a valid point. The question that I would ask rhetorically now is that would Eric and his crew be willing to put trees that are larger than apparently the code currently calls for a six-footer? I realize additional costs would be involved, but would that be a possible compromise?
That was rhetorical, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And we'll be back for a rebuttal, and he can address it at that time.
Yeah.
I'd like just to make the reminder that this particular piece of property is already zoned for neighborhood commercial.
Yeah.
And many of the uses that it could have been used there didn't require our review at all.
Yes, understood. Anyone else in the audience like to make a comment before we move forward? Okay, if not, then we will call for motion to approve ordinance number 1254 to start with, and if you'll add findings and conditions to your motion. Yes, we have any other questions for the applicant? Okay? Move to approve 1254 with all conditions. Second. Suzanne?
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Suzanne, move on to approving ordinance number 1255. Move to approve ordinance number 1254, 55?
55.
55, excuse me.
Second.
Okay, Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Suzanne, move on to approving ordinance number 1255. Move to approve ordinance number 1254, 55?
55.
55, excuse me.
Second.
Okay, Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, and one more, approving ordinance number 1256.
Motion to approve ordinance 1256. I do not believe there's any conditions with that one.
Great. Second?
Second.
Okay, Suzanne?
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne.
I'd just like to say thank you. We have gone through a long process with the neighborhood. I think that showed this evening. We've tried to do everything we can, so I just wanted to say thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. And good luck. Okay. Sure, before we move on to item 9H, John, would you like to recuse yourself?
Yes.
Okay, so, welcome back.
Thank you. This item is a simple minor subdivision for the Valley View subdivision proposed by America West Housing Solutions, and Mr. Keith Meyer is here in the audience this evening representing that organization. And the location of the subdivision is north of town, up Highway 67, adjacent to Valley View Drive and Highway 67. It is currently zoned multifamily urban, and the surrounding uses to this tract of land, which is 3.33 acres, are varied. First, you have to the east, a suburban residential lot that the community Christian, the community church sits on, and then the community church also owns this community commercials property that is a set of offices. And then to the south is more multifamily urban zone. Across Highway 24, we have the Stone Ridge PUD, and then heavy service commercial where O'Keefe Ceramics is located, and service commercial where the Tamrac Business Center is. So this is a quite mixed area and has been zoned multifamily urban since the year 2000. Prior to that, this property was owned, zoned C3, so it has been commercially- And then heavy service commercial where O'Keefe Ceramics is located, and service commercial where the Tamrec Business Center is. So this is a quite mixed area and has been zoned multifamily urban since the year 2000. Prior to that, this property was owned, zoned C3. So it has been commercial property in the past, and currently it is vacant property. I failed to mention that there is a floodplain that encumbers about 20% of this property. It is the Lloy Gulch area that traverses just on the southern portion of the property. And so the development will occur on the unencumbered area. And this is a permitted use for an apartment complex that will be reviewed administratively once the subdivision is approved. A little bit of history associated, it was annexed into the city in 1981, and then subsequently subdivided or originally platted as part of the Parkview Estates filing number two. It was known as Lot One at that time, also encumbered with some easements with water lines that crossed this property as part of the paint pony in the city system. Then in 1984, it was subdivided into Jamestown Square, and there were a number of commercial tracts that were carved into this property. There was only one building that was developed when it was subdivided and replatted in 98 into parcel one and two. And these townhome sites or commercial sites were then vacated subsequently in 2011. So right now, as platted, it's one large lot with the easements and the drainage easement where the Lloy Gulch floodplain exists. And tonight, American West Housing is proposing to subdivide into two lots. Lot One, which is adjacent to Highway 67, is 2.12 acres. And Lot Two, which is just to the east of the highway, is 1.22 acres. Both of them are of developable, buildable size and will function quite well. There is a concept plan in your packet, although we're not here this evening, to discuss the buildout, that is a permitted use for a 25-unit apartment complex with its associated parking and other improvements. But just wanted to show you that this is an appropriate, buildable-sized lot for what America West Housing Solutions is interested in doing. I might point out that there will be a culvert that will cross the floodplain and a subsequent flood hazard development permit that will be reviewed by Planning Commission as part of the site plan improvements for this site. So it will meet all the FEMA requirements for handling the 100-year storm. When we review a final plat, the subdivision regulations have a number of different design standards that we look at. The plat was drawn by a surveyor and reviewed for accuracy and easements. The purpose, creating the two lots, is perfectly acceptable. And the site conditions is that it is suitable for development with respect to grading, drainage, erosion control, utilities, landscaping, and architectural design, which will be handled through the site plan review process. There is adequate street frontage and access. It has frontage both on Highway 67, although no allowance for curb cuts onto 67. The curb cut will be off of Valley View Drive, which is approximately 200 feet east of Highway 67. The easements have been reviewed, except IREA did ask for an expanded easement along Highway 67 from 10 feet to 15 feet. That's perfectly acceptable because it's also within the setback. The setback requirement is 25 feet from that property line. There's also, they're proposing the utility easement, which is 30 feet on the access drive, where increase, where including access and drainage to that easement so to serve Lot Two. The stormwater easement that encumbers the Lloy Gulch floodplain, there will be onsite detention for the improvements. Also, park capital fees will be assessed and collected at the time of site plan. The staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval of the Valley View subdivision final plat with two conditions. First, we would like for the applicant to confirm the alignment of Centennial Trail. That was redeveloped when the new culvert went under Highway 67, and the trail was slightly pushed to the east. We want to ensure that it's still within the right of way, or if it is not, that that easement will reflect the allowance for the trail. So it's a simple fix, just need to verify that. Next, we would like for the plat to be edited with those two utility and drainage easement changes, and they need to replace the certification block, make that more appropriate. And we also will be reviewing a detailed utility plan in order to make sure that the easements are appropriate for the new fire hydrant that will be required for the development. So with that, we recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Sally, I was looking at the recommendations for the fire district. They mentioned the hydrant, which I think I saw up there. But they also mentioned that they couldn't, they had access issues because there wasn't two ways in. Is that going to be rectified before the building's built?
Yeah, absolutely. And so in speaking with the fire marshal recently, what they're requiring, will require is for this loop to be at least a gravel surface.
Okay.
And plowed in order that if there is a fire and they bring in a truck that parks here, they will be able to have another access that they can either evacuate or also bring in more fire equipment.
Okay, and I did, maybe I missed it because there is a huge gulch right there. Are they putting that underground?
No.
Or no, that's right?
This will be crossed with a new culvert.
Okay.
And the fire district is fine. This will be a fire lane, so there won't be any parking on this driveway, and they'll have access into the parking lot and loop around.
Okay, so not a, not a bridge, but a built-up culvert with a, okay, pipe running through. Okay.
Okay.
Actually, this will be the last time the council would see this issue. That's correct. So the only question I had was it being in a floodplain, are there any concerns that cannot be overcome?
Good flood hazard development, their box called.
Thank you.
The building won't be in flood.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Have any of the neighbors to the north contacted you?
Yes, we have heard from the neighbors to the north. They participated in the public hearing with the Board of Adjustment. A portion of the middle of this building will be at 35 feet. In this zone, the requirement is for a 30-foot tall building. That was approved by the Board of Adjustment, and so the board listened to the property owners to the north and felt that this was the best orientation and the best respect for those view corridors. The way this parking lot is aligned, that view corridor will be preserved in that portion of the lot, as opposed to building, building straight across this northern part.
Okay, and then lighting, how is lighting for that parking lot? Because that's obviously going to go into the windows there for the current residents. Are they just going to do downward lighting?
Correct. We will apply full cutoffs and fully shielded lighting and be sensitive to that.
And it turns off at a certain time? That might be too micro detail, but has that been mentioned at all?
That'll be reviewed as part of the site plan review.
Okay, so that's, gotcha. Thank you, Sally.
Any other questions from council? Public comment, and I have Chris Rush signed up. If Chris would like to come forward. I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Chris Rush, and I live at 755 Apache Trail Number 11. And so I'm in one of the buildings that actually is to the north of the proposed building. I do have a few questions. Can you hear me properly? Because I'm kind of short and I'm not sure if I'm in the right place.
You're great, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I do have a question with Sally, that to the north of the houses on Valley View Drive, up the road from where this proposed building will be, there's a drainage that goes behind the yards there on Valley View Road. And it does come right down. It's directly, I'm not sure if I can do this right. Probably not. No, let's not bother with it. It does come down and then parallel with the property line there, and it does flood. There are also two wells on the other side of Pilot Road, which indicates that there's underground water there. I don't know how deep that is. With the added water runoff from the parking lots, and also with the earth being moved around as the buildings go in, I wonder what safeguards you have for flooding with that area? I know there's talk of some kind of ponds and things like that. But there's been with people that designed some of these houses, if you don't live right there, or if you're not familiar with the area, do you actually know how heavy that water comes down? It is huge. The drainage system on Valley View Road beside there is excellent. Congratulations, Woodland Park, that was wonderful. But do you know when we have our heavy rains, that drainage ditch is full and overflowing? You're nodding, do you know that?
We'll answer all your questions when you get done.
Yeah, okay. Well, the bridge is excellent. That goes over, over that little creek down, 67. It's a great bridge. However, when the water is really, really heavy, that water comes up over the top of the archways. So that is quite a dangerous condition there if we're going to have children around. The water really does fill up almost to the road and backs up. So there's quite a bit of consideration. I haven't heard that mentioned. Also, as I live on the north side of this building, I spoke in the floor, and I'll try not to bore you because I know you've had a long day and you all want to go home. But this concerns my life and other people who live in this little community, Valley View, Valley Park Village, or whatever it's called. Yeah, you see, we're right there with the area that is designated as a drainage. And I'm tickled to death to find out it's going to be a sewer drainage as well. So if we have flooding, what happens to our houses? We're right, right beside where our drainage system was being put in, or will be designated, will we be flooded? We don't have anything to stop floodwater coming in. I don't, but my next-door neighbors have. Their bedrooms are on the ground floor, next to the earth. If we get flooded, their bedrooms flood. If I get flooded, my subspace will be flooded. I have asthma, and so this is why I'm bringing it up. I have asthma, and one of the other residents also has a daughter with asthma. And so we're not trying to, at least from our own perspective, I'm not trying to stop any building going in for low-income people. I've worked with them all my life. I've worked with street kids. I've worked with the elderly. I was actually a victim, I worked at one time for this particular place for Woodland Park. I had an office just down there that I shared with one of the detectives, my friend. So I have every confidence that this is a great plan to help people. And I'm willing for that. I'm not trying to stop it. I'm just trying to speak up before the damage is done, to be proactive. And I would ask you to consider my questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David, would you like to start?
I'm going to give this one to Bill.
I'll start, Sally can jump in, but Lloy Gulch is a designated FEMA floodplain, and the limits of the 100-year floodplain are delineated and on the floodplain maps. And that's quite a way south from where their structure is and where I believe this citizen lives. The bridge that they'll be putting in, culvert, will span that and can't have any adverse impact on the floodplain and any changes to it. We've recently completed our Stormwater Master Plan, which includes analysis of drainage throughout this area. And we have some improvements designated in that plan and maintenance items designated in that plan, too. But as far as the 100-year floodplain, that's pretty well-known as to where the limits are on that. Yes, sir?
Yeah, because she mentioned she's lived just north of there, and they currently experience flooding there. It may not be part of the 100-year floodplain, but it may be improper drainage of the roadway there or something like that. So can you address?
Could be, but that's a county road. It's county. Not to get bureaucratic about it, but that is a county road.
So I think her concern is the water's going to flood down into this plain here, and that the developers need to be aware of it. That's all.
Well, and when they do their site drainage, I mean, site drainage, erosion control, sediment control are all part of the review process.
Thank you.
I think it's important for anyone to make these comments in a public hearing, but for the vacation of the line that we're discussing tonight, it's irrelevant.
Any other questions? Public comment?
Good evening. My name is Frances Sennell, and I live at 1804 Columbine Village Drive, which is approximately down here. So my view of the apartment complex will be going north. And before I forget, the previous speaker was talking about the drainage and the flooding that happens up in this area, so I just wanted to clarify. It's my understanding that there used to be a retention pond, was it here or here? The retention pond. Oh, I don't know. Well, it was my understanding in the last planning meeting, because I was here for that as well, that there was a retention pond that wasn't maintained. And so that particular area that is going to be north of this apartment complex has all sorts of problems in terms of the drainage. Also, too, it's my understanding that there are some drainage culverts right here as well as the ones that go straight across from the floodplain, and those are insufficient as well. Now, that just kind of begs the question, when we put a 25-unit apartment complex on it, we are stretching resources to the max. And I, as a citizen- And I, as a citizen of Woodland Park, would like to make sure that we don't... And I realize that, and I said this the last time I spoke with the Planning Commission, I was here for the last two meetings. And I have some great concerns. And my great concerns are largely because I've spoken with most of my neighbors. And it's just, it is a shame that people don't show up for these things when they're this important. So I feel an obligation to come forward and speak. Now, I realize that this ship may have already sailed, and this apartment complex is going up, and this is a matter of use by right. And that evolved over time, as Ms. Riley indicated, 1981, 1982, 1988, and 2000. We're talking 15 years ago. Now, what may have been a good idea back then is not necessarily a good idea right now for a whole bunch of reasons. A lot of the development in this entire neighborhood occurred over... For example, my house was built in 1987, and I believe that the previous speaker's home was built somewhere in the late 1980s, or like, the late 1970s. Most of us moved up to Woodland Park, as I've discussed with most of my neighbors, because of the beautiful character, the quaint character of this town, the fact that we can look around and, thank God you're a tree hugger, Mr. Mayor, because that's part of the beauty of where we live. When we turn around 150 degrees, we see some beautiful mountain town. And we're becoming a suburb of Colorado Springs, and I think that that's just a shame. The responsibility of our city government is to maintain the character of the town, of the city, in accordance with the residents' wishes and the reasons why we moved here. If we develop the hell out of this thing, everybody is gonna continue running west and hoping that the development doesn't follow us. I heard in the last planning meeting that all of this area here is going to be slated for future development. Now, and I'll speak to something that's directly on point for tonight in terms of making the subject property into two different parcels. And it was stated by the developer, and also Ms. Riley, that the parking lot that's going to run alongside of the building is going to keep the sightlines clear, so that the view is not gonna be obstructed. But if we approve dividing this into two sections, what we're doing is opening it up, and these were the words in the last meeting, for future development in this. And so pretty soon, everybody that's up here, their view of Pike's Peak is gonna be completely gone. So if we make bad decisions now that are a predicate to future bad decisions, we should stop now. There are a number of concerns, some of which have been raised. When we have lighting in an apartment complex, that pretty much messes up one of the reasons that we, who previously in Colorado Springs moved up here. We like to go outside and see the stars at night. And I realize that there are some requirements for lighting, but it doesn't, the lighting is still obstructive and obtrusive when we try and enjoy our night sky. And I would really like to not have that go away.
Excuse me. If you keep your comments to the replat, that's what we're discussing today?
Well, I understand that we're discussing that today, but I guess that begs my question. Are we ever going to have any kind of a public hearing?
We don't have, we will not have public hearing, as far as I know, once the replat's completed.
Well, then I'd ask that you indulge my remarks, then. I don't, well, if you want to tell me that I can't make any further remarks, I think that's a violation of my civil rights, but...
Well, I will give you time. I will give you a few minutes. We're trying to confine our comments to what's on the agenda, but if you have further comments, go right ahead.
Oh, I understand what's germane and what's not germane, but I do think that, well, there are so many people who have said to me that we're developing the heck out of Woodland Park, and that's not what we signed up for. And there are a couple of other concerns that I have. This particular area is in the valley. And if there are little kids playing all the way down the block in my area, which actually, that's a great sound. I can hear them. But apartment complexes, they have other sound problems. They have vehicles, they have music playing outside. We're gonna have noise problems. We're gonna have emissions problems, not only just from the normal emissions that come from the monkey family unit, but also... The 200-feet turnoff into the apartment complex from Highway 67 in Valley View, that's just completely insufficient. We're crowded enough already. Our houses are on very small lots, and now we're going to be adding 25 more units in the small area that's already congested. My concern is, as I attended the planning meeting where the variance was approved from the height of 30 to 35 feet, and the general consensus was is, those people to the north, they're pretty much out of luck anyhow, because 30 feet's gonna block their view. Let's just go ahead and do 35. I don't like that type of government. I don't like that type of lashing out. And now that we approve everything that is set before us, even though the citizens don't like it, it just gets us closer to putting into effect something that an entire neighborhood just absolutely can't stand. And I know you've taken my word for it, but that's the best... I feel compelled to bring these points up. Also, I am unaware of, with respect to blocking this off into two separate lots, whether federal requirements are going to be met with regard to sewers, with regard to sidewalks, and all of the other requirements that the federal government has for subsidized housing.
This is not subsidized housing?
Well, it's my understanding, as of the last meeting, that the developer is going to receive subsidies and that the rents are going to be based on certain percentages in the, I guess, extremely low, low, and soil-low areas of income, when we use the multipliers to our median income, which is $72,100.
I understand, it's not a subsidy, it's a tax credit.
A tax credit, then. Pardon my choice of the wrong term. But anytime the federal government is involved, requirements have to be met, and I haven't heard any of those questions answered in terms of how those requirements are going to be met. There are requirements for backyard and front yard size. I think it's 25 feet in the front, 25 in the back. Haven't heard anything about that. Also, well, and this is, once again, off the reservation, we just heard about a community for our elderly coming to Woodland Park. But I've heard a lot of arguments in the previous planning hearings that the need for the elderly is one of the reasons for this apartment complex. So one of my questions is, is what's the factor with the retirement community? What kind of effect is it having on a 25-unit apartment complex? We haven't heard anything about what the rents are going to be. So that also goes to the issue of the need. If rents are substantially lower, I suppose I could understand. But it seems to me that when I run the figures, rents are gonna be comparable to the new complex, 168-unit complex that's by the Safeway. And I'll just close by. My neighbors have asked me, is this a done deal? Is this something we can fight? Do we just wave the flag? Or do we ask our city government to help us make something that we disagree with so vigorously not happen? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question. I do have a question for you, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what, if this doesn't go there, something else will eventually go there. You know that, right?
Correct.
Okay. But nothing, you don't want anything to go there ever, do you? In your mind, what would be the best thing to go there?
Well, this apartment complex is two stories. It doesn't have to be two stories. It doesn't have to be as many units. The developer responded last time when that issue was raised of, well, we could do a lot more. We're entitled to doing a lot more.
So what do you want there?
What do I want? I'd like something that's not obstructive of the views. I'd like something that doesn't create so much congestion. I'd like something that aesthetically fits in so that it doesn't block views. I mean, it's, I walk my dogs, actually. We walk, we meant walk on our dogs, up and down the Centennial Trail. And that's just gonna, that's gonna change the dynamics incredibly, because most of that walk is going to be by an apartment complex, a long apartment complex.
Valley View, our community church there, has five times more traffic than this place will ever do. But you're not complaining about the church there, are you?
Well, the church doesn't have a 200-foot turnoff as you get right into the neighborhood.
So if that doesn't go there, what if a church went there? Do you be concerned about that?
Well, actually, if I wanted to rank the lesser of two evils, I would say a church would be a better bet, because you're not going to have congestion but probably one or two days a week, instead of every single day. So that's, you're not gonna have the lighting issues every single day. You're not gonna have the noise issues every single day.
You know what, I'm gonna stop this conversation. We are, we're back to the replat. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have a question? Counsel? Okay, if not, then we'll call for a motion to approve Valley View subdivision. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Shaker? Oops, pardon me. Austin?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. Okay. Yeah, John's coming back. Kay, you wanna take a five-minute break?
I will take a break, and you call me back.
You don't need to, because we approved that.
Yeah, no, we're done with the...
I thought you might want to...
We did. Yeah.
I thought you might want to take a...
Thank you. We want a generic break.
A generic break?
Five minutes?
Let's do that. We convene at 10 till 10.
She already did, eh? Yeah. Go right to budget, huh? Yeah.
We only have a budget to go soon.
Everybody deserves their five minutes.
Yeah. Just one row. It was in the apartment complex, essentially. The house is right along that road. And 10, 50 years ago, when they wanted to build those, and some of us were complaining about this really ruthless.
Yeah, you know, I live off of Majestic Parkway and to give their Eternate Walgreens, and there's that whole plot of land there where they were gonna put in a boom. Well, it was all for that. I mean, they were looking for a condition to use for that, but I wasn't excited about it. I knew that that property couldn't be here. You know, buyer beware.
A couple that live out of house just to, you get, yes, they just question again. And then we're gonna be doing improvement stat rock. And you're thinking about that view. You knew you were buying next to it.
What's wrong with the bird? Really, do I get a message that says, call the four-star channel? So I've had to. I got scared, I'm like, maybe this one's a chicken. Oh, no. It's my mind. And I was supposed to meet him at 8:00. He said, I have to change it to 8:15. Okay, so what do you want? You may ignore this call. We should just like work together, right? We're writing the same stuff, you know? You could do one, I could do one. One meeting, we do one meeting. I should have been able to... Yeah. Five minutes as time goes on. Does it get better? I'm gonna decide to do... It's gonna come down to, can I dedicate the time to this and do it right? And it's basically the same thing, it's just gonna... Gosh, I mean so much, it really does. I know I pissed a lot of people off, though, did it? Yeah, I did get promoted. Just, man, I'm still doing the same old stuff, though. I'm so glad to know Andy. Yeah, I work my hardest to make sure we're not out of sight, out of mind. You do. You do.
Yeah, we're both, and like, could be, yes. So later. I want, I want you to hear it.
No, that was, that was enough right there. That really meant a lot. Is he okay? I have a good guy. Thank God the cat. You know, those cheese cats hanging out around my house. No, because they're catching mice. They're my friends. I thought, boy, cat wants a girl cat.
I had two, you know?
Maybe a little baby cat. I love baby cats. I have two terriers and that's their life, to kill cats. They'll just run. Just tolerate some. You know? Yeah, I find this, oh, they're getting on my nerves. And they're smearing their balls. Well, we even have it west of, but you're just a little bit, they don't know it. They're powerless. Well, I got the other half. So if I see you creeping around with new BSI buildings. I put, I put another review, that's great.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We're on new business in item number 10B. We're giving the budget and Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, we began the budget discussion last week with overviews of the budget message, the general fund, the grant funds, the debt service funds, and the street capital improvement funds. And this evening, we bring to you the downtown development authority funds, both their operational budgets and their debt service fund, and the enterprise funds, 510 and 520. And of course, if you have questions about any of the other funds this evening, we're happy to answer those. We'll be bringing to you on the November 19th meeting, the resolution certifying the mill levy and the first reading for the ordinance with the intent of then having the public hearing and the final reading of the budget appropriation ordinance on December 3rd. We're on track to do that. And this evening, again, we'd like to begin the discussion with the DDA fund, both operational and debt service. Brian, why don't you step up to the podium and we'll just go quickly through that. It's a unique one. And we're prepared to answer any questions that you may have. We don't have a presentation for you. We're gonna follow the same format of answering questions that you may have. So what questions do you have about the DDA fund? Sir?
Yeah, as with previous, I went through the whole budget and put an email out to you indicating what my issues were. And so everybody's had heads up on my questions. And in particular on this one, the 2015 fund is projected to receive revenues in the amount of 410,100 and make expenditures in the amount of 392,7, leaving a balance of 18,093. Likewise, in 2016, the fund is projected to receive revenues in the amount of 529,031, which is a 29% increase in your revenues. So you're getting pretty healthy there. And make expenditures in the amount of 509,814, leaving a balance of 9,214. I recommend that the DDA pay these 2015 and 16 balances towards the debt to the city in addition to 36,000 that you have budgeted to repay the city. Because why you need a balance at the end of your, why can't you make expenditures that match your revenues in that you do, owe, still owe money to the city? So that was my logic there.
Just one thing, and then I'll let Brian answer it from his perspective. But the most, the more important number is not the annual expenses and revenue, it's the end result. So it's the carryover from previous years, the balance forward. And so on the summary page, the unrestricted fund balance, as you see, parentheses, is That number can't go over a million. That's what was agreed to by the council. That was the million dollar loan. So our touchstone has always been, that number stays below a million dollars.
Okay, so that's why it's so close to a million.
That's exactly right. We push the envelope every year with the DDA budget. They're extremely healthy from a revenue perspective because of the new construction that's occurred. But with that comes additional responsibilities for expenses, debt service, et cetera. The 36,000 that you see there is the agreed upon repayment of the city loan in 2016. And there really is very little opportunity for additional payment to the city with this budget because that unrestricted fund balance can't go over the million.
Now, my other question is, why are the DDA 2016 expenses going up by 21% from 2015? This is after deducting the 36,000 that they're paying us back.
Go ahead, Brian.
I, just a couple of thoughts. First of all, Councilman Carlson, I philosophically agree with you on the debt payout to the city. It is, it is our philosophy, certainly mine and the board's, I would say collectively, to do that as quickly as we can and as reasonable as possible. A couple of things to note in the 2016 budget that are different from previous budgets. And we, as the city manager has noted, the $36,000 payment, which is due in April of 2016, will be made. We also have a candid, one of the things that has affected our budget, since I've been on board as the DDA director over the last three years, is abatements. We really have no control over abatements. It's run through the Teller County Assessor, ultimately approved by the commissioners. I think in '14, we had an abatement impact to our budget of approximately 58,000. Last year, it was somewhere close to 20,000. This year, with our finance director's recommendation, we have created a line of 20,000 to account for abatements. We will be doing an analysis probably mid-year because usually after May of 2016, we'll have a good understanding of what abatements are out there, projected. If we have excess revenue that we're projecting or that we will analyze, in fact, I want to make one point, Councilman Carlson, you had mentioned our 15 revenue was 410. It was actually 398, but we did receive 410. Again, a good story about what's going on with construction, what's happening as a result of our TIF increment across the board. We are going to see, as a result of new construction, the, within the DDA, within TIF agreements, accelerated revenue. Again, going back to abatements. Once we clearly understand what abatements are, and again, that's usually mid-year, we can make, the board can make some decisions about additional revenue expenditure if those are there. And I would concur, our first line of priority would be debt reduction. And so that would be something we'll continue to oversee and I'll report to council. But with this budget, we feel making good progress moving forward.
The revenues went up with property tax. The expenses go up commensurate that to pay off some of the TIF reimbursements. Brian mentioned the abatements, the 36,000, the attorney's fees, they always overspend on attorney's fees, so that's accounted for upfront. Those are the primary reasons that the expenses have gone up.
Yeah, and that, my next question was regarding the attorney's fees. Yes, you had budgeted 5,000 and actually spent 5,800. But then we're jumping up to 14,516. And so is there something you're anticipating that's kind of above normal or something like that?
That's actually a contract professional services that accounted for in '16, approximately $7,500 in attorney fees. The additional 7,000 is for marketing expenses that we anticipate for marketing Woodland Station. We will create a plan where we're looking at a master developer concept, selling the remainder of Woodland Station in bulk. That is a priority for 2016. That will also help reduce the debt, the million dollar debt. So I've accounted for some marketing budget under that line item.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions on the DDA budget? The mayor had to step out, so. Okay?
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, council.
Then we'll move into the enterprise funds, 510 and 520. I think TIP had a good summary in the budget message as it related to those two funds. So we're happy to go through the summary pages behind the tabs for the water enterprise fund. And we'll just go through the pages as we did the general funds. So do you have questions? Well, let me make one statement. On the summary sheet, just behind the 510 tab, the presentation in this summary sheet is slightly different than the general fund. You can see, for example, about two-thirds of the way down the sheet, you see a fund increase/decrease. And you also see just above that, the unrestricted net position. The unrestricted net position is enterprise terminology for unrestricted fund balance. An enterprise fund is a separate business. It has slightly different terminology. But what councils in the past wanted to see was what's the annual revenue versus expenses? So when you look at the very bottom of the page and you see the negative 343,898, that's a one-year glimpse, but the true balance in it is the 1.6 million. So it's just presented a little bit differently, and sometimes it causes people to gasp to thinking that we're in the hole when in reality we are not. So what questions do you have on the summary page? Then let's flip to water administration. Well, I, my, I don't have the revenue page. It's one of my shocks. So were there, apparently I just don't have that page. So were there questions on the water revenue? TIP, why don't you take us through the rest of the pages?
So the first page was the revenue page under water operations and water capital. Any questions?
Just a general question, not particularly about operations and capital, but for the project on Highway 67, what will the total tap fees be from that?
Depends on water fixture units. I haven't seen a schedule for those water fixture units yet. I would say on average, a normal apartment will have around 16 fixtures, water fixture units, and you'd be looking around ballpark, 9,000 to 10,000 a door. I do not budget for that project. We don't budget for those large capital projects until they come in. Seeing no questions there, go to the next page for water administration. Next page, water treatment operations. Next page, water capital. Next page, Water Capital. I would like to point out one line item at the very bottom, 510-343-9510. You'll see a big line item of budgeted for 2016 of $500,000 as for the reservoir engineering.
And where's that to be located?
We're trying to locate that right next to our current reservoir, Lloyd Gulch.
Okay.
Are you still in negotiations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. When do you think they might be done?
Hopefully by the end of the year.
This year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we're shooting for.
Yeah. Okay. Good.
Okay.
And what's the total estimated cost of the reservoir?
Preliminary was 8.5 million. We'll get more clearer numbers as we move forward. Next page, Water Rights and Water Field Services.
Do you anticipate then buying water rights this next year?
No, we actually will already own the water we'll put in that reservoir.
Okay.
And as far as additional water rights, unless they come up by chance like they did this year, when the opportunity presents itself, we would like to jump on those when possible if the situation is right. You know, it depends on the year. Some years are wetter and drier, and some years are more valuable than others. We like to try to grab them when they're not as hot.
I understood that with all the rain we've had lately, you really wanted to get that reservoir built so we could collect some of that.
It would have been great to fill a reservoir this year, yes.
But that, if we build that reservoir, those are, if we have the water rights for that water coming flowing down?
Yeah, that would be straight augmentation water that we already own, we just have to pay to get it here. So we pay a conveyance fee to Colorado Springs Utilities in one of the line items. We can bring over 500 acre feet in a year, in a wet year, when we're not using as much water, we could bring more over. Okay. Moving on to Water Customer Services. All right, seeing none, we'll go to the 520 fund or tab. First page being the summary sheet. Like David said before, I'll just echo that, we represent the numbers a little differently. At the bottom, you see a negative number, but halfway up the page, you see the unrestricted fund balance. Okay. No questions there, we'll move on to Revenue.
Okay. What are, I thought we were adding to the wastewater plant.
We are.
Yeah.
If you flip to Revenue, I'll point it out to you. So on the first sheet under Revenue, and you'll see wastewater capital, line item If you follow that across, you'll see the year-end projection of 186, 274, and then requested for 2016 is 570, 108. That's basically our contract that was approved from the engineering and design for the facility. And you'll see the exact same expense related to that, and when we go through expenses, because we get reimbursed for those costs from the loan. So we pay it, get reimbursed, and then our debt service starts next year. Okay, we'll flip to Expenses under Water Administration. Next page would be Wastewater Treatment Operations. I would like to point out here, on the very first line item at the very top, we haven't filled a fifth position, and we're going to leave it with just the fourth position. That's why you see, that's why you see the number go down.
That's okay?
I believe so. We'll reevaluate after the expansion to see if any additional duties come forward with the expansion. The staff has been able to absorb that fifth position quite well, actually. Okay, no questions, we'll move to wastewater capital. To finish up your question, we're going to go through the expansion under line item 520-340-6240. You'll see a payment next year of $50,000. That's the, that's the $2 million loan that we got at 0% interest.
Thanks for the, thank you.
And then shortly in 2016, we'll be coming back to you for approval of the rest of that loan, the remaining six and a half million. Some other big ticket items on here, just to point out, 520-348-9430, 5147. You'll see budgeted in 2016, 105, we're going to replace a loader. That's actually a loader, and a roofing, and a feed sledgehammer.
The loader's the one that does the wood chips?
That's one of them. Yeah, we have two.
Okay.
Pest Control?
Can you even look on Craigslist for that?
We have a grass squirrel problem. I don't want to call them prairie dogs, out there that are an ongoing problem from the property to the north. They like to come through the fence, and it's an ongoing problem.
We need some cats.
We actually have a cat out there that just never goes outside.
Right.
Okay, with no questions, we'll move on to wastewater customer services. I would like to point out that with the online offer that we have, more people are signing up for that, which is nice.
Counsel, that's it. We presented the entire budget to you over the course of the last two meetings. As always, we're prepared to answer any questions about any component of the budget that you may have either this evening or through the course of the next four weeks until we ask for your final approval in the first meeting in December. Do you have any other questions this evening?
Just one comment for Kip. I think witnessed by the lack of questions, and your budget is just outstanding, the way you all manage your money, and things that have been done, and I've been privy to it for the last couple of years, but great, great job.
Thank you. I'll pass that along to our staff. They do a great job at cutting those costs down for us, and we're fortunate with the right.
We should all be in that kind of fiscal shape. So congratulations.
Now, also, I didn't have any comments at all on the agenda, but I also think that we do have a advisory board for the water people. I don't know if that's the right name, but we do have council members on that, and we would hope that they, that's already been gone over, so to speak. So, I'm not attributing it to that particular board. The main accomplishment is through you and your staff on getting this budget together.
The UTE is an advisory committee, basically goes over policy, not operations, but they have their own.
And it is all yours.
It's our whole staff.
It is. And Kip occasionally has to remind us of why we're there.
I would also like to point out that the DDA board did approve the budget that you heard from Brian. They approved it at their Tuesday morning meeting to bring to you this evening. So they have vetted it as well.
Just an alibi on DDA's budget, I noticed that you had the line item for $20,000 for abatement, or potential abatement. It could be more, and so any cushion we had could in fact cover abatement as well.
And I do have some additional cushion, assuming we get all the revenues that are projected. Just a note on revenue, we do get certification from the Teller County Assessor end of August. That's where that 529, 529,000 comes in. We get an updated one end of the year. It doesn't usually vary by much, but that's absolutely correct. If we have any delta there, we'll account for that, and we'll again be paying close attention, but we're keeping, abatements have, we feel that we'll have less abatements in '16. We're keeping our fingers crossed, and again, if we do, then we can look at some further debt reduction.
Thanks, Brian.
Anybody else relative to budget? Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Staff? Thank you.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Good job. Absolutely. Okay. We're going to move on to, move on to, never commented on items on the agenda, I don't believe we have anybody else today, so we'll move on to reports. And I'm going to start this evening with the student art that's behind Kip and Bill, and presented to us by Michelle Noreen, blog month, and she's about two or three years old. She's a 12th grade student at the high school, and again, if you want to see more of these, or if anyone's interested in having them in their business, contact the school administration, because they're terrific. Friday, November 6th and Saturday, November 7th, the 5th Annual Rocky Mountain Christmas Boutique benefiting Choices of Teller County, 9 to 6 p.m. at the Shiny Mountain Golf Course. Information at 310-4043. Saturday, also November 7th, 9:30 to 4:00, and Sunday, November 8th, 10 to 3:00, the 34th Annual Slim Rail Model Railroad Exhibition at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. Wednesday, November 11th, a great day, Veterans Day. There are a number of events in town. One of them's at the high school. Can you speak to that, David? I don't have that on here. Do you know the time? Is it the 9?
I believe it's 9 or 9:30, and it's usually a very powerful assembly.
It's terrific. And any veterans here that are listening, everybody is certainly invited and welcome to that great event at the high school in the gymnasium on November 11th. Also, the American Legion Post 1980 hosts a Veterans Day Ceremony and Dinner at the Ute Pass Cultural Center. Doors open at 5:00, ceremony at 5:30. Free buffet for veterans in active duty, reserves, National Guard, and their families. So a great event at the cultural center, also on Veterans Day this coming Wednesday. Saturday, November 14th, Winners' Farmers Market at the cultural center, also from 9 to 1:00. And Tuesday, November 17th, the Chamber Business After Hours hosted by Peoples Bank from 5:30 to 7:00, always a well-attended event. And that's all I have. Counsel reports. We'll move on to Karen.
Yes, sir. The Charter Review Committee met again last night, and thank you, Erin, Suzanne, John, and Ken for attending. I'm not going to go through what we've finally come to, I think is our final recommended, or referred, how did we decide to refer? Referred measures. But I did want to bring up some important dates for people to keep in mind. We'll probably clean up our final slate of referred measures between the first part of December and the first part of January, because all of our measures, or referred measures, will need to be on the council's agenda in January. We plan on an initial posting of a proposed Charter Amendment ballot initiative ordinance on the 21st, and at that time, we'll provide a staff report, even though it will be the initial posting, and that'll give both the council and the public an opportunity to mull over our recommendations. February 4th will be the actual ordinance, a public hearing for the ordinance, and then of course, Election Day is April 5th.
Thanks, Karen. Well, Kip?
Yes, I'd like to say a few things on behalf of Keep Woodland Park Beautiful. They have an annual review, what's available in the back, and for those of you watching this on TV, you can pick it up at City Hall. Also, we have a Keep Woodland Park Beautiful newsletter, but the annual report is actually, because it kind of gives you a summary of all the things that we do throughout the year, and how many people are involved. We've got a great committee. Jan Wilson's involved, and our resident person is always here, Renee. Do so many things for our community, but if there are others out there who'd like to volunteer to help keep Woodland Park beautiful, especially, we're going to be talking about the Woodland Park Cemetery in the future, and it needs a lot of help, and we need a lot of volunteers. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Mr. Moore?
Yeah, just a brief statement I'd like to read. I want to correct a statement attributed to me in an article in the November 4th Courier Review. It quoted me as stating that there was a vote by city council on a certain issue, when in fact, no such vote occurred. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil. No? Nothing? John?
No. Nothing.
Okay. Thank you. Next, Erin?
I have one commendation I want to make to council, and that is to recognize Keith Wilcox, because his assistance and his contribution and his work on all of the right-of-way package was absolutely invaluable, and he needs to be recognized for that, and I thank him.
Thank you. Mr. Butterby?
No, sir. Nothing.
Nothing. Okay, I just have one last thing, comments on written correspondence. I need to read this letter. It's dated October 20th, and dear city council, I was perusing the mountain jackpot this week, and wanted to respond to Councilman Carlson's remarks last week during the budget meeting about the scourge the city deals with in subsidizing Parks and Rec for county folk. My family lives in the county, and we utilize Parks and Rec, so this message seems aimed right at people like myself that are getting subsidized by fine city folk like Mr. Carlson. But life's not always that simple. In addition to living in one of those county dormits around Woodland Park, we also own properties within Woodland Park proper. My wife and I also coached three separate teams this fall in Parks and Rec, and like Mr. Carlson's service to the city, we're not exactly doing it for money. So in addition to paying property taxes multiple ways each year, both in and out of the city, we pay program fees for the children and then coach for free. We volunteer many, many hours to the city's programs each year. While I can appreciate Mr. Carlson's penchant for fiscally responsible government, the realities are simply not as black and white as needing to quote, "raise fees on people not paying their fair share," unquote. If Mr. Carlson really wants to get money flowing back into city coffers, I'll offer a couple of suggestions that might actually move the needle. It costs me more to go out to dinner than it does for the most wealthy, quote, agricultural landowners in the city to pay their property tax bills, AKA the Sturmans and others. By statute, they pay between $2 and $10 a year for land they're currently marketing for $20 million or more. And what about selling off the senior center? I've always thought that it was a poor use of valuable and untaxed land in the middle of town. After all, don't more seniors have a kitchen of their own for making pancakes? Obviously, I speak in jest. The city is no more likely to go lobby the state to repeal extremely valuable agricultural land exemptions used by the wealthy than they are to take away senior gatherings. But I think it is unfair to go after the soccer kids or their moms, because it is somehow perceived as the low-hanging fruit of the day. The soccer moms and their children aren't the problem, and they never were. I closed with a phone of one of my teams this fall. These are kindergartners in their division, they aren't even, in their division, there aren't even goalies. Can you tell which are the free-loading county kids and which aren't? If not, I recommend council direct Mr. Butterby to do more important things with his time than create additional fee structures within Parks and Rec. Sincerely, Todd Weissman.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I just wanted to correct a misimpression here. At our last meeting, I was not proposing that the individuals pay anything more than, you know, the citizens of Woodland Park. As evidence of that, when we started developing the business plan for the Aquatic Center, we tried to identify what the number of potential members would be, but we only used one price for those membership rates. We didn't have any in-county or out-of-city rates. So that was never my intention. We have always recognized that county residents pay property taxes, and in return for that, they get certain benefits from the city, one of which is Parks and Recreation and the Aquatic Center, at the same rates as city folks do. The only reason I brought that up was that, to the same extent that city residents are paying for county services with their property tax, we should be treated equally, fairly, that we shouldn't be charged above and beyond for the services that the county provides free of charge for their own residents. And so, you know, this is, that was basically the point, what I was trying to reach at.
Thanks for clarifying that. If there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.